Hello. Welcome to the Santa Cruz County Board of Education's Board of our meeting of June 20th. If you'd all be seated, thank you. Do we have any board members that wish to attend via Zoom?
We do not. President Roth?
Okay, thank you. And now Superintendent Sabah, if you would lead us in the such allegiance.
Excuse me, President Roth, we need to do roll call.
I'm probably by the end of the year I'll get this right. Yes, please, very easy.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
President.
Trustee Acosta. Trustee Estrada.
Present.
Trustee Nichols.
Here.
Trustee Sanchez.
Here.
Trustee Van Allen.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
President Roth.
Yes, here. Now Superintendent Sabah, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
If you are able, please stand, face the flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now I am looking for a motion for approval of the agenda.
A move.
If, um, maybe I'll wait for the second and then I'll ask for her.
I'll second.
Who's first?
President Roth, I was hoping the board would consider amending the motion for tabling items 9.4 and 9.5 till the next board meeting. We noticed that there was a, a, a small error in the, in the backup documentation and would like to bring it back to you at the next board.
I'll accept that as a.
So all in favor, oh, excuse me. Oscar.
Yes.
Thank you. Board, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Now is the time for a public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items outside the agenda. The board president will recognize any member of the audience not previously placed on the agenda who wishes to speak on a matter directly related to school business. Each speaker on any specific topic may speak up to three minutes unless otherwise limited or extended by the president. The president may allot time to those wishing to speak, but no action will be taken on matters presented. If appropriate, the president or any member of the board may direct that a matter be referred to the superintendent's office for placement on a future agenda. Okay, do we have any?
Yes, President Roth, we have a request from public comment from a parent, Michael, who is in the audience. You may come forward.
Hi. So it's a little tough for me to talk about. It might take a little bit more than three minutes. So I have had two kids go through SoCal schools. My daughter graduated in 19. Her last semester of her senior year, she became addicted to prescription drugs and that turned into an addiction of fentanyl. I've spoken about this to as many teachers I can and different neighborhood safety meetings and things like that. I sat through a meeting for an hour and a half at, um, the county building with the supervisor and a bunch of other people. And nobody talks about fentanyl. Fentanyl is a number one killer of kids in this country. My son just graduated from SoCal and the whole time they teach about addiction, but they don't teach about death. They don't teach the kids that if they take Xanax, especially Percocet, OxyContin, that it's no longer prescription. It's no longer from Mexican pharmacies. It's no longer from their parents' cabinet. It's all from the street. It's like if you go to the cookie store at the mall and you get a big bag of cookies and one's got too many chocolate chips in it, you don't know who's going to take the wrong cookie. I, I was just talking to one of, um, an executive from the school board, I guess a middle school kid, overdosed and their friends gave them, um, fentanyl, the fentanyl, or not fentanyl, gave them Narcan. The Narcan came from their dealer. I, why the schools aren't impressing on the kids that they're going to die if they take this stuff is beyond me. I had to watch my daughter for three years until she's been sober finally for the past year and a half. Until I finally found her one night at about six o'clock. Luckily I went and checked on her. I'd have ambulance just come to my house and save her. And it was from a Percocet she took, but I keep hearing these stories over and over again, a Xanax bar split by eight kids. One doesn't wake up. And why, if this was COVID, we would know how many ambulance visits, how many hospitals, how many deaths that we had, right? And if you guys read any of the police, the people that post stuff, this city has so many overdoses by fentanyl and it's all over the place and it needs to be worked into, I don't know, a homeroom or something like that where, where they're talking about this. As I said, my son just graduated from SoCal. Great student, pays attention to everything and they never talked about the chances of dying from taking fentanyl. And I don't know whether it's the president, the information officer, or who can maybe set a curriculum where we can, where we can work on that stuff. And my son had to wa- He had to watch his sister go through all this and it was very tough for him and me also. But my son, as I said, did very well in school. Actually, he got into Harvard, so he'll be going there this fall. And it's, it's just something that you guys need to work in your curriculum and anything you guys can do, I would very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could get the, the gentleman's phone number, if we could get your phone number, because I'd love to follow up with you, sir.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else or not, that you, is there any other public comment?
Seeing no requests on Zoom nor in person.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a? By Rachel Williams. Oscar, your vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Have any deferred? Moving on to correspondence. There any say, is there any additional correspondence that has been received?
No additional correspondence, President Roth.
Okay, thank you. Now we approach momentous time. Retirement recognitions for this year. Dr. Sabah, if you would like to start.
Yes. So it is, uh, you know, I, I, it is bittersweet when we get to speak with our, to honor people who have been a part of the county office of education and part of the educational system for, for many, many years, um, who are leaving us and going on to, uh, kind of the next chapter in their lives. We have several folks who we would like to honor this, this, this evening and we have several folks here in the audience. I'm going to kind of turn this a little bit so I could see both. And, um, so there's a few people that we're going to be honoring today that are not here and this is not unusual. Many folks are, don't want, don't feel comfortable to be, to be celebrated and, and which is kind of unfortunate because we want, we want to let people know what an amazing impact they've had. And I, you know, as I think about the importance of the work that we do in education and I think about the words of the gentleman who spoke a little bit earlier, I think about the important advocacy that takes place and the, the efforts of our educators and support staff and the work that we do is so important and has such a huge impact. And these are people who have dedicated years and years of their lives in support and advocacy of students and families and programs and doing everything they can to help our students, to uplift our students, to, to give them what they need, to be successful, to feel complete, to be, uh, to, to bring their, their whole selves to our schools and, and really to, to feel that, that sense of belonging that we want for all our students. And so I'm going to speak to you about a few folks who are not here first and so my, my comments about them will be a little bit shorter. But it definitely not, not in any way implying that their contribution or their impact is any less. And the first person that we'd like to celebrate tonight who is retired, who has retired from the county office of education is Yolanda Gallardo. And Yolanda has been a, has started with us in the student support services program and then started working for our special education office. She worked with the autism program as an instructional aide and also, um, for the last few years has been working as our department administrative assistant. And, and continued to being an interpreter for our program. And she has been an amazing liaison with our families and, and we're going to miss her. And so we, we are celebrating her tonight and her retirement. And we're going to be presenting to her an award which we will send to Yolanda so that she could have that at home. So let's give a round of applause for Yolanda Gallardo. Next, we'd like to celebrate Kevin Drinkard, who is an experienced, longtime educator, math teacher. He's worked in our county for over 35 years and the last few years, um, he joined us here, uh, part, first with the, with the new teacher project and then as our mathematics coordinator as part of our ed services department. And, um, he formed a math leadership network, established family math nights, math teacher circles and, um, and helped us build a multi-year collaboration with the Silicon Valley Math Initiative. And his advocacy has been truly felt across the county. He's going to continue hopefully, hopefully working with us after he retires to help us with a math initiative that I'll be talking to during my superintendent's report, something that we see is very important. And Kevin is somebody who's going to be helping us with the implementation of the new math framework and to continue ensuring that, that we bring equity and excellence in mathematics to our students in the county. So, uh, we celebrate tonight Kevin Drinkard. Round of applause. The next person is somebody who needs no introduction to you because she's been a part of our, of our board meetings. Angela Meeker, also over 30 years of experience as an educator in our county. Worked at, at Delta School, at, at Santa Cruz City Schools and the last few years as our ed services, uh, education, associate superintendent of educational services. And she continues to work at, or to participate as a board member for Santa Cruz City Schools. Angela has brought so much integrity and heart to her work. It was such a pleasure to work with her this last year in her position, in this last position, in this position as associate superintendent. And we know she's going to continue to do amazing, amazing things and continue to advocate on behalf of students. So please join me in congratulating Angela Meeker. And next we have Jody Belgard, who has been a part of our, uh, our business services department. She started as an account specialist in the CDRC program and in 1985. And Jody decided to move to the business information technology systems and has, and has been there for, has been here with us. She's outlasted four superintendents and 39 years. She's outlasted three CBOs and two deputy superintendents. I think she probably would say this proudly. And, uh, and she's just built a lot of amazing friendships, has been such an amazing liaison with our districts and, uh, and here in the, at the COE, participating in, in a variety of different county-based events such as the county, the, um, the, um, the county fair and a variety of other activities. And so we will miss Jody and can't, I can't believe she's leaving. I guess I'm, I'm the lucky superintendent who, who gets to hang in there after Jody's left, but, um, Jody has, has been wonderful to work with and we will miss her. Please give a round of applause to Jody Belgard. And now it is my pleasure to celebrate somebody who is here. And, um, and Elias Tapia is somebody who's been with us for 16 years as part of our maintenance and operations crew. And I have to say that I've known Elias, well, you know, since I started here about seven years ago. And I was always just inspired by his, his, his smile, his positive energy with me and just knowing that he was working so hard on behalf of our students, helping to ensure that, um, our environments are safe, that our environments were clean and ready for students to learn. I have enjoyed working with him. He's, he's one of the folks I get to speak Spanish with in the building and you know, I love to, I love to speak my Spanish as, as, it's kind of my first language, but maybe not. And so it's been really a pleasure to work with Elias Tapia. I am so honored that, that he's here. I believe that he, uh, you see that celebration that we had with Elias. There was a lot of love in the room, a lot of us that came together to celebrate him and to thank him for his years of service to the county office of education. I'd like to welcome up here to join me Elias Tapia. Please come on up Elias. Por favor, acompáñen. And Elias, would you like to say a few words?
We're not ready. Only, only going to say is I'm enjoying my retirement and it's a totally different, uh, step I, I had to adjust myself. So I've been doing a lot of gardening. I'm growing tomatoes and chilies and all this stuff and keep myself busy. And because getting retired, if you don't have no plants, so I think, uh, life is starting getting, it doesn't get right.
And Elias, who's, who's here with you?
Uh, I have my daughter and my daughter's husband and my daughter's going to have a baby in August.
So Elias, on behalf of the county board of education and the county office of education, we'd like to present this award to you for your 16 years of service, of loyal and dedicated service in education. I'd like to ask your daughter and, and her husband to join us for a picture and, and could we have the, the, the board members join us in the, in the center of the room? Thank you. And now we come to Maria Castro. So Maria is, uh, kind of a legend in the early childhood education community. She has been a part of, um, the, she has, was the person that, that really has brought a lot of the programs and services for early childhood education and really has been a pioneer in our community. And you know what? I don't have it written down, but how many years you have Maria with us? 30 years with us, but a lot more in, in, in education, over 40 years in education. Maria has been leading our migrant head start program. And I have to say that one of the most impactful things that I have done has been to join Maria on the visits to those home-based, uh, centers, the, that where they're providing early childhood education services to students through our migrant head start program. And the care with which that Maria would provide services also to, I have to tell you, some of the most regulated environments in education is those federal programs under, under migrant head start. I don't think there's any other program that is more regulated, both by state licensure as well as federal requirements than, than this one. And Maria has been such a leader of compassion and accountability that is absolutely inspiring. She is, um, when I got to visit, I got to participate in, in several meetings with these providers as we were letting them know that we are going to be shifting the slots that were allocated to the county office of education to the Pajaro Valley Unified School District because, um, they have a lot more capacity to be able to provide, um, these services because they're such a large program. And I got to speak with these providers and their words were absolutely powerful. They talked about how much love and care Maria has shown them and how much she has been a champion of early childhood education of these educators and the children that they serve. In a way that they just, they were extremely saddened by the fact that she was retiring. And of course, we were happy for her, but, but also I think it recognition of the deep impact that she has had on thousands and thousands of lives. It has been an absolute joy. Maria lets her presence be known at all managers' meetings and with her questions and sometimes her honest opinion of things and I love it. I love it. She's absolutely somebody that comes with so much confidence and speaks of her family and of Portugal and of the children she serves often. I feel like, like we are in a way losing a friend, but of course we're not losing her. She's just going to be moving into a, a new chapter in her life. But it has been absolutely inspiring working with, with Maria and we are going to miss her. So let's recognize Maria Castro. Maria, will you join me, please? We'd like to ask, we'd like to ask Maria to please share a few words with us.
I have notes because this is torture for me, so I'm a little bit fragile.
Would you like to put the microphone here?
Okay, so three decades, three superintendents, about a dozen education managers since I've been here. Oh, but this is awkward because there's more people here. The more important.
She's ever revolving.
So, oh, a correction. They're not centers. Family childcare homes. That's what's unique about our program and Pajaro Valley too, because most of the children are in family childcare homes, not the typical center with 20 kids. These are, you know, a regular family who turns their front room or their bedroom or the backyard into childcare world. And they care for the children from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Two women, sometimes a couple, but mostly two women. So it's really quite different from a childcare center. And yet all the federal requirements are the same as for the, the homes, as for the centers, which makes it really, really challenging. So I guess what I've tried to do is to imagine what their work is like, waking up at 5:00 AM to prepare the food, to clean the house, to make it safe for the children, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and then do it all over again five days a week. And what's amazing and what I'm really proud of is that they've stayed with us, some of them for decades, even though now there's other agencies that pay more and require less. That's because they've bonded with me and with my staff, Rosario, Sonia, Sonia's not here, Patricia and Cynthia to a certain degree, because Cynthia does all the business stuff. And because of that connection, they're able to cope with the requirements which seem to keep increasing year by year. So the, um, the three coordinators, what's kind of unusual about our program, we're probably the smallest delegate in the country because we only serve basically 170 children a season, a year. And how we were able to do it with a staff of five was that each coordinator did two jobs. Half the time they're specialists, so they monitor and train the providers. And then half the time they're like social workers who support the parents, the families, help them, uh, access resources in the community, help them learn about the school system, how to prepare their children for kindergarten. And so it's like two different jobs. In most agencies would be one whole person doing one and another person doing another. And they did both, which was really, really unique. I don't know if it's going to be repeated because it's very, very challenging to have both sets of requirements. What I am proud of, oh, another thing I want to mention is that we wouldn't have survived if we didn't have the consultants. We had a consultant for nutrition, a consultant for many, many years, Rosa Salgado for health, another one for mental health, another one Natalia who did translating for Michtecos so that we could connect with Michtecos. So those consultants supplemented with the two positions, the two job positions is how we were able to exist for all these years. And now I, I kind of knew always that this wasn't going to be sustainable because of something called economy of scale, that it wasn't as we grew and the money wouldn't increase to keep up, but eventually it was going to shift to PVUSD, which is a much larger agency and super, super efficient that has centers and I think 60 or 70 family childcare homes. So, oh, and very important, oh, I'm so glad you came Sergio. Okay, I would not be here if it wasn't for three people. Sergio, because I had a technology crisis every other week. And Tara, because I don't understand fiscal or numbers. And then Karina, because there's a lot of HR, because it's a federal program, so there's all these HR requirements. So those three people were the ones that I absolutely had to have in order to cope with the job. And Cynthia Peterson and a few other administrative secretaries before her who helped me with all the bureaucracy. Because what I really like to do is visit daycare homes and do trainings and argue with the feds about all the requirements. That's what I really enjoy doing. And, and, and you know what? I do think though that there have been a slight changes recently that they're becoming more aware that they can't treat the providers like they treat the center staff. That the center staff has a secretary, has maintenance, has a family service, they can't treat them the same. the same because it's just one family, right? So I'm a little bit optimistic that things are going to change for the best. Because I've spoken quite a bit, as I do, to the feds and to the grantee, so I'm optimistic. Oh, I also have a volunteer, Liz Schilling, my friend, volunteered introducing English to the, some of the children in our childcare program in a very playful way. And who else should I acknowledge? Oh, Misha, my one and only grandson, has been putting together packets, files, forms and toothbrush kits since he was three years old. This is true, this is true. And this is going to be really hard for me because I don't cook, I don't sew, I don't sew. I don't know, I'm gonna just look for volunteer positions. Anyway, thanks for letting me have so much time. And I guess one more person I should thank is my husband, because if he didn't bring me coffee every morning, I never would have survived. This is true. And I'm so happy to see all the leaders in the ECE world. It really means a lot to me that you're here. Thanks.
So I'd like to present this award as a token appreciation from the County Board of Education, from the County Office of Education for your many years of loyal and dedicated service in education and on behalf of our children and families. Thank you so much, Maria. Can we get a picture?
Oh, sure. Oh, lucky.
Any family members who'd like to join? We'd love to have you.
Um, my dear.
Remember Misha being born. We have Bruce. You can have mine too. Okay, we're ready to, to move on. We are going to now go into public hearings. Item eight point one, public hearing twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, Local Control Accountability Plan, as known as LCAP, of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education. Dr. Sabah? I've got it. I don't know what we would do without our superintendent. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. We will now move to item eight point one. I hereby declare, open the public hearing regarding the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education. The board is here to listen at this time and will not take action until next week. Staff will make their opening presentation to the board regarding the twenty twenty four, twenty four, twenty five Local Control Accountability Plan of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education. Public comment and input will be received by the board from individuals wishing to speak. Each individual will be limited to three minutes. The board will have an opportunity to ask the presenters clarifying questions. Then the public hearing will be closed. The opening presentation, Dr. Jennifer Isant Gonzalez, Senior Director, Alternative Education. You may now know, you may now make your opening presentation to the board regarding the twenty twenty four, twenty five LCAP of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Jen Isant Gonzalez and I am one of the directors for alternative education programs. And first, I always like to make the joke that nothing clears out a room like an LCAP presentation. Because without fail, each year, I just, I'm so moved with our colleagues who have spent so much of their life of service here. And so that was wonderful. So I really appreciate that. And for, for a large sort of compliance document, we'll try our best to really focus on our students and the human, you know, the human side of this, this lengthy document. And so here we go. Next slide. So before going into it, I wanted to do a little bit of background for our programs. Welcome, Trustee Williams. It's wonderful to have you here as part of your first review of the COE LCAP. So the County Office of Education, and I'm not going to read the slides, I know you all have them and have all the documentation here, but we're very proud of our COE alternative education programs. They are comprised of COE-run court and community schools. We have a myriad of programs all tucked away around the county to support students and we like to think we can find a program to meet the needs of any student who walks through our doors. We really try our best to do that. Throughout the year, we serve over a thousand students. In the beginning of the year, it's around six hundred and fifty, and then towards the end, it's a little bit over eight hundred. We also provide summer school for students attending any of the districts throughout the county. So we serve a lot of young people in our county and we're very proud to do that. We have three different types of programs. We have independent studies, we have hybrid programs where students come a few days a week, and then we have classroom-based programs. And I want to mention that I've got two amazing colleagues back here and two, four, sorry. Sony and, and Johnny Rice here, and we've worked together for well over a decade now, the three of us, and we have a wonderful team and I'm just honored to present this and be a part of this team. Forgot to mention one more thing. I need to give a shout out to Sony for revamping the slide deck. This is a three-year plan and we've used the same template for the past three years. And I said, we've got to make this better. And she jumped at it and used Canva and made this, made the templates. So I just want to honor her because that is, it was, it took some time. So thank you, Sony. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so our mission at our Santa Cruz COE alternative education programs is to provide a safe, supportive, community-based environments where students can really thrive and take ownership of their future. Next slide. Before we get into our annual update and then LCAP and budget overview for parents, we like to highlight what our community said. We had more students and family members partake in our feedback surveys than ever before in the history of our programs this year. And I'll explain a little bit more about why we had such outreach this year, but it was amazing, the turnout. Our, and basically our, year after year, even with having so many more students and families take the surveys this year, consistently, our programs have been safe, supportive environments. Our families always say that they can reach out to staff, that staff listens to them, that they're a part of their student's school and their progress. And yes, there's always improvement that we, we want to make. However, year after year, safe, supportive environments and a lot of gratitude is expressed through our feedback. Next slide. Okay, so what is a brief LCAP overview? I know for many of you, this, you've, you've been through a few different LCAPs, but just to kind of lay the foundation for this, it is a document that shows how we meet the ten state priorities. School districts have eight priorities, we have ten because we're a COE program. And we're going to go through, you'll see in each of the goals, they definitely meet the needs of all of these ten state priorities. The LCAP is a folk, focused on students who are considered to have high needs. And these students are English learners, socioeconomically disadvantaged students and foster youth. And I will also say that the LCAP, while the state has tried to make it and improve it better each year, it still is a document that for county-operated programs, it's kind of like putting a square peg in a round hole. It's not perfect yet, they're still working on improving the template, and we do our best with the compliance part of this document. And also what's different about our LCAP, we start the process here with the county board and we have a team of reviewers at the state. They have all, our reviewer has already gone through our LCAP multiple times and we've met about it. And she's very confident that our document does meet all of the requirements. And so after, after the COE board process, it then goes to the state and it's in the fall where we kind of wrap it up and the, solidify the approval of the county-operated LCAP. Next slide. All right, so there's, like I said, there's a few different, three different components. We have the twenty three, twenty four annual update, we have the twenty four, twenty five LCAP, which is kicking off a new three-year cycle. And then always another component of the LCAP is the budget overview for parents. So before we get into our exciting new goals and actions for the next three years, we need to reflect on how, every year, you'll get an annual update. So for each goal, one, goal two, so goal one focuses or did, this was our prior year focus, focused on academic programs, sort of the basic entity that we, that we run. And goal number two was really focused on social emotional supports. You'll see how, how these goals in the new LCAP are still part of it, but definitely have a distinctly different twist. However, I will say for goal one and goal two, actually all of our goals as you go through, we did carry them out as planned. You'll notice that, yes, and you can skip to the next slide, please. Yes, there were some material differences. For example, we had a couple wonderful colleagues move on to different positions in our organization. So that meant, oh, they left mid-year, we spent less money on their positions. And then in other cases with the annual update, you'll see, oh, you spent a significant amount of more money than was originally budgeted. And that is because we did receive more money this year because the funding formula changed. So the way that our alt, all, the way community and court schools are funded did change in this school year. So when we had done last year's LCAP, the adjustment was made. So we had more supplemental and concentration funding coming in and we did spend all of it. So you will see that there's differences in the expenditures, but the goals and actions were carried out for the twenty three, twenty four school year. We also, thank you, we also, in February, if you were here in February, which you all were, except for Trustee Williams, we now are required to come with a mid-year update. So we went over most of the twenty three, twenty four goals and actions extensively in that report, and then this just kind of wraps that up. Okay, now the excitement begins. So kicking off this year, why we had so much community feedback was because it, this year coincided with our Western Association of Schools and Colleges, our WASC accreditation process. The WASC accreditation process is something that's near and dear to our programs because we were, I believe, Johnny, one of the first programs accredited in the state. So WASC is something that is very important for us. It really validates our diplomas. And so we had a full self-study that went through this year. We received the highest accreditation status that you can get, which is a six-year with a midterm report. And so our, our teachers, our support staff, our families, everyone in this business participated in this WASC process and it was phenomenal and it was a perfect alignment with developing a new LCAP. So that's what I wanted to say is that we, we really did fine-tune and redo this LCAP with intention and we're very excited that it coincided with WASC and also that WASC recognized how wonderful our programs are. So it's really great. Yes.
That's really huge, isn't it? Oh, congratulations.
Thank you. I realized when we did this six years ago, when, I forgot, we had a, a separate presentation about WASC. And I think we just, it was such a busy year and we're doing the new LCAP without, we didn't, we didn't do that. So then that's why we wanted to put that in here because it was a tremendous feat for everyone involved. And, but what really stood out to them too was our community partnerships. We had a community partner luncheon here and the tech center full of people in the community that support our programs and really how our, our programs are integrated in our community and so student-focused. So thank you. Yeah, it was really awesome. All right. Without further ado, let's, oh, so here, here are our new school-wide goals. So through that process, we came up with three areas. So in alternative education, we strive to help our young scholars become more curious, conscientious and confident. You really have to boil it down to an elevator speech, as Johnny always says. What are we doing day to day? We want students to become lifelong learners, be compassionate and healthy and loving and be confident. Because you can have all those things, but you need to step up to the plate and be able to, to show your best self, to commit to that job and do that interview. And so we were so excited, we had the three Cs, big change from our former school-wide goals that we had, we had had for a long time. And everyone was involved, students as well, that we did student activities to do this. So each of our, our first three goals of the LCAP, the first one's tied to curiosity and, and being curious and then conscientious and then confident, but I'll explain that a little bit more with the next slide. And, oh, I also want to highlight the graduation photo in the front of the first one and this graduation. And this graduation photo, really want to thank Ronaldo and the entire Tech Plus team, who came out and documented the beautiful graduation summer ceremonies we had. I just went through the albums with our teammates today, and the black grad pictures are just so beautiful. We, it's just, we went through each one, and it was, it's phenomenal. The photographs really captured the beautiful moment that we had at each of these intimate um ceremonies. And trustee Williams, I can't wait for you to join us uh next year. We do mid-year graduations as well. So um, that's, there's lots of photos in here. We try to splice a lot in, so. Okay, so goal one, goal one is really about cultivating a love of learning in our students. It is no longer okay to just be about checking the boxes of your, what you need to get to get that high school diploma. You need to be um, as you move on in life, you need to remain uh curious and be able to always want to learn new things. You don't want students to have to get to the, just get the answer. And so our goal one is really about academic achievement, um cultivating a love of learning. And through this, uh, most of the money that we utilize through this for our supplemental and concentration funds goes to additional instructional assistance that are a core part of our programs. Every single one of our sites um has an additional team member there to help support students. And they go above and beyond working with them on a, on an assignment. On any given day, I have gone to all of our different school sites and seen our instructional assistants be the family liaison. Um, they're out playing sports with the students. They're letting them take a minute in the office and talking things through with them. And that'll be a common thread for all of these positions, that if, if uh someone wants to be a team member in alternative education, you've definitely got to be able to treat the, the whole child and support the whole child and really step up in different ways. And so we spend a significant amount of money on, on our instructional assistants and continue to do so. And our metrics show that it is, it is um supporting the academic growth of our students. Additionally, we have developed more positions, uh curriculum and instruction, and also English language development leadership. Uh, so one of those positions that did leave um was Barbara Hubner, who's now in our, our um ed services department. But she, she started here at the COE as a TOSA in Alt-Ed. So really focusing on English language development and having curriculum and instruction leadership, and these are teacher leaders. So that's um something new that we've added and continuing forward. And um basically, goal one, it still covers our core instructional programming. Goal two, uh, so goal two really goes to conscientious and compassion. So this is supporting all students in developing healthy, emotional, physical well-being and providing a safe, supportive environment, um, including access to counseling. And so we have increased the number of counselors internally that we have on staff. Traditionally, we had contracted out um with some other organizations and had less counselors. Uh, what we kept hearing from our community and our students was the, the integral role that counseling plays in our students' lives. And so every student, and yes, I know the LCAP is definitely geared towards students with high needs, and every student at all of our sites has access to a tiered supportive counselors. Um, and so that's, that's the main part of goal two is to continue to fund and support our growing counseling team. And uh additionally, in this goal, I'd like to highlight, I forgot to mention some of the new changes that were in this LCAP. Uh, and so in this, in goal two, we have an action for our special education department, not our special education students in Alt-Ed, which we, we do have many, it's our special education department who runs regional programs. And so we have an action in here to improve attendance. And so that's um a specific focus this year that was required to be put into the LCAP that was never a requirement before. So in working with um Devon and our special education program, we developed an action specifically around engaging students in those programs to improve attendance rates, and that will be monitored over the next three years. So that's a, a new, a new thing this year. Goal three. Goal three is really about confidence and community partnerships. Um, our students uh overwhelmingly say how important the role of the community-based organizations and the connection with their families is. So for example, we have Mountains to See, we have Food What, we have many community-based organizations that give our students the opportunity to sort of flex their confidence, their self-empowerment, their ability to try something new. And we have a beautiful community too. We have just, I mean, it's a lovely place to do different enrichment projects or what we would argue should be part of core curriculum, we really, it really should be, is being out in the community. And uh so that, community partnerships is a big part of goal three. And additionally, the other large expense that is without a doubt one of the most impactful parts of our program, our family and community engagement team. This includes on each of our sites, um either a project coordinator, specialist, community organizer. There are point, point people, you can see in that uh right there, that's Sandra Romero, one of our community organizers, leading a parent meeting at Sequoia Schools. We have a robust um team of people who, we know all of our, we know all of our students. They know all of their families. They know when, when people are going through hardships, they know when celebrations are about to happen. And they really keep the pulse of um that family connection, and that is such a huge part of our programs. And so that's um, this is our goal three. Goal four, so goal four is a required goal for county-operated programs. There, that's for state priorities nine and ten, that we coordinate the countywide plan for expelled youth, which will be coming your way next week, because that three-year plan was due in conjunction at the same time as this new LCAP. Um, and also countywide educational services for foster youth. So those are two requirements of the COE to manage and run. And they're also very near and dear to the heart of our programs. And so I will say for our expelled youth plan, there are numerous things that we have in place. Our student service director meetings monthly, um, and I will say it's uh, we are a small county, but there are multiple different districts and entities that um that are here in our, in our community. So the way one school district does something with regard to expelling students is different process than another school district. So it takes a lot of time to build, cultivate those relationships and um keep them intact so that you can really support a kid when they're going through that expulsion process. And I, and I do believe that we've worked very hard to have those connections with all of our district partners. And it's very important to, to have that so that you can always support a student when they're going through a very trying time in their life, and their education program should not be interrupted during that. Um, so I'm, I'm very proud of all of the hard work that we've done in our programs. Um, and then our foster youth team through our student services department, the case managers um support students in alternative education, and they do professional development and case management at all of our school districts. You'll hear nothing but great things about the dedicated team that we have, um, supporting our foster youth all around Santa Cruz County, many of whom are, are in our alternative education programs. And they have that added layer of support with their case managers who are out there advocating for them. I just got an email today, oh, this family wants to meet you about switching schools, and they're going to borrow vans, they can pick up the family and bring this, you know, it's just like, it's all hands on deck. And I really believe in that team, and it's been a, a great joy to work with them. So goal four, while it's a required goal for the LCAP of the County Office of Education, it's really a core part of our programs, educating expelled youth in our community and supporting foster youth all over the county. And lastly, goal five, so goal five is another new addition to this LCAP. It's called an Equity Multiplier Goal. So we uh qualified for Equity Multiplier Funds for our court school students. Um, and while our court school student number is very low, the way that the, we earn this fund was um, it's essentially based off a, a transitory rate. So students in court programs, they transition in and out of programs a lot. That's the nature of what they are. So the um, because of that and because of our college and career indicator for our court school, we received additional funding. The additional funding necessitated um a specific goal. And so we are creating goal number five, which is supporting our Santa Cruz County Court School. And what this was, will do is we're going to hire a college and career counselor to support specifically our court school students. And we also have a lot of great things going on in our court school right now. These are two of our students who um are working in our newly built library there. But we have a partnership with Cabrillo College called the Rising Scholars Program. And so now we have uh someone else, an additional person in conjunction with our Rising Scholars Program to really support students in our court school programs to have more access to being duly enrolled and also career exploration. So this, this funding actually provides us the possibility of funding an additional counselor to our already robust college and career counseling team. But now this year, we're hiring multiple new people um to be a part of this team and supporting our students. And that is it for our new goals, goals one through five. And now we go into what is called the Budget Overview for Parents. And the Budget Overview for Parents, uh, what it basically has is it does have a little bit of a snapshot of last year. So it says this, last year you were expected to get two million, seven hundred thousand in, in um supplemental concentration. We ended up getting three million and something, uh, three million and change because of that funding formula. And so it, it states that, and then it states, okay, how much right now are we anticipating getting in LCFF funds, state funds, and federal funds for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year? And it's required that this presentation, this public hearing go before what's going to be the most exciting presentation ever, the budget presentation right after ours, because the intention is that we go through the narrative portion, we go through why we're spending our money in certain ways, and then you get a snapshot of this is what we're expecting to get. And then it's so fun because it's going to change, and LeAnn loves that, because it's never set in stone. Um, the way county programs are run is, we run year-round, so this is what we're anticipating, and we build our numbers off of the numbers we currently have. But um, you know, we don't have exact attendance numbers and stuff until the, actually June thirtieth. So anyways, it changes, and this is the snapshot of where we're at for our programs for next year. And then, okay, that is what I have for our public hearing presentation. Um, and I know went, covered a lot of different things in this, in this um LCAP presentation, and we added a little bit to give some more context to our programs, and hopefully that was, um, I know it was a lot of info, but um beneficial to understanding this process. And of course, I'm here to answer any questions you may have for our COE LCAP.
We'll first ask, uh, there anyone from the public who would like to speak about the twenty-two-four, twenty-five LCAP of, of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education? You will have three minutes each. Anyone? I see only familiar faces, so, okay. Moving on, I will now open it up for questions and comments from the board. Do the trustees have any questions or comments for Dr. Isan?
It was riveting. Only four people stayed. Four lucky ones.
That's right, that's right. Thank you, trustee Nichols. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll second um the very concise presentation and streaming it down to your goals and your objectives and tactics and achieving them. And thank you for that. And I'll also second Bruce's sentiment earlier. Um, there's a lot to be um celebrated in your annual performance previously. So congratulations.
Thank you. And I cut some slides out right before this presentation, because I looked at the slide deck, and I was like, oh, this is way too long. It was a very long deck.
Well, I just want to, again, appreciate both the commitment to the kids and the education that we achieve here, but also the um, what else, the grit and determination and implacable um forward motion of getting these plans done. I think everybody understands, we can't do education in our society without a whole lot of requirements because of where the money comes from and politics and you name it. So that all comes down to how do we actually work that out on the ground here? And I just applaud how well you do with it. And again, it's not quite the same as connecting with the kids and being there for them. It's sort of enabling the structure. But you, you pull it off both things, and that's just, I love it. So, thank you.
I, I appreciate that, trustee Van Allen, and um I have to tell myself that, like, today, we, you know, got to, Nick was there too, and we got to spend some time with, with our students at Hartman. And I try to cherish those moments because they kind of feed it a little bit, you know, to get through the compliance. What Maria Castro mentioned really, you know, got, because there's a ton of compliance, and it's, 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 it can be challenging and overwhelming at times. But if you have the balance of, okay, this, this is making it so that our programs can continue to run and be funded, then it gets you through it.
Thank you. Once again, I, I think a lot of praise going around. Um, I did have a question about the college and career support. So are, those are new positions that are going to be funded, or is it expanding what's already being done?
Thank you for asking. Great question. It is expanding. So we currently, uh, up until for this coming school year, we've had a college and career team in place. And when I say college and career, the team consists of um both certificated counselors as well as guidance counselors and work experience specialists, because the team, it's whatever the student needs right now and where they're going. So one, for one student, it might need, oh, I, I need an internship. I have an IEP, I'm going to get an internship, a workability one, and that's what I'm working on right now. And then the next step is, oh, dual enrollment, or, oh, a trade school. And so we have a team that works one-on-one with students um at all of our programs. Another part of it is also work permits. Work permits can be a very frustrating thing, but they're needed if you'd like to work um anywhere. So um, that's part of it. But what we did this year is we hired a college and career teacher on special assignment slash coordinator. And we were very happy that one of our internal um teachers, her name is Lynn Cully, and she works at Oasis Aptos. Uh, she became very passionate about dual enrollment and supporting kids. And that sort of um was something that she was just naturally drawn to. And so she threw her hat in the ring for being the leader of this team. And so she will be stepping into that position July one. And so we now have someone who has both the Alt-Ed experience as a teacher, who's certificated, and knows the ropes, um, sort of taking leadership. Then in addition, we are hiring, well, hopefully, we are doing um a, a bunch of interviews next week where we are funding new counseling, new certificated counselor positions. So we will, for the first time ever, have more internal counselors on staff as opposed to um just um contracting with some outside agency and have them part-time. So it's, it's growing. And again, back to what was previously said, these are, these are counselors that toggle between social, emotional, and college and career. So the team is robust, and we also met with uh our Rising Scholars Team today at Cabrillo this morning to let them know that we were, uh, we have these new positions, one specifically focused on court school students. And then what we're going to do is do a kickoff event with the whole college and career team in the beginning of the school year to really see how now with more people, more cooks in the kitchen, it can be like, there's a lot of onboarding and sometime, you know, navigating all of that. But we do believe that this investment in expanding that college and career team is going to help students at whatever place that they're at in their edu, in, in their journey of getting either a part-time job right now, or what's the next step? So good, solid team right now. Next year, it's going to have a little more leadership as well as uh new positions. Yeah, so it's exciting.
I, I mean, I, I love that. I mean, it's tackling, you know, multiple goals.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, excited, excited.
I think it's all been said. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
I could add my thanks as well to, to the team. This has been a, a challenging year in, in many ways, but also a year of growth. And uh the WASC accreditation, the, there's so many, so many indicators of uh, of the success of this program. And the WASC accreditation, there's so many, so many indicators of, of the success of this program. Maybe nothing, nothing any more important than seeing how many of our students are succeeding, how many, seeing their faces and, and their families as we celebrate their graduation. But there are, it really feels like, I, I think that the reality that we represent one of the largest alternative education programs in the state, that our students, the sustainability of our program and students persisting in our program and succeeding in our program and, and greater numbers and all the amazing dedicated staff that we have and leadership that, that stand advocating for students and for equity. It's, it's really, it makes me proud to, to, to be a part of this and I hope you feel proud as well.
As, as ever, I look at the LCAP with absolute awe of what you have to come up with. And that you're smiling at the end of it is great. And the six-year certification is absolutely fantastic. I also like how this shows that not only do we have our own kind of cohort of students, but we also oversee the different districts within our county on things like the expulsion of foster children, court school. It's integrated and over the years to see that we all are, are really acting in the same way with the same expectations for the most part is really gratifying. And since we're the second smallest county and yet look where we are. And I think that we have a gift in being so small to be able to, that we are able and capable of doing all of these programs is amazing and I'm proud, very proud to be here representing county. Thank you. Yep, a little bit more here. I hereby declare the 202425 LCAP plan or LCAP of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education closed. Thank you again, Dr. Isant Gonzalez. The County Board of Education will consider approval of the 202425 Local Control Accountability Plan of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education at our next board meeting on June 27, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. Okay, now. I think I have to do this again. Yep. I am now opening the hearing. We will, which is item 8.2, opening the public hearing regarding the 2024 Local Control Accountability Plan LCAP of the Santa Cruz County Career Advancement Charter School. The board is here to listen at this time and will not be taking action until next week. Staff will make their opening presentation to the board regarding the 202425 Local Control Plan of the Santa Cruz County Career Advancement Charter School. Public comment and input will be received by the board from individuals wishing to speak. Each individual will be limited to three minutes. The board will have an opportunity to ask the presenters clarifying questions. Then the public hearing will be closed. Denise Guerra Sanson, Executive Director, Student Program. You may now make your opening presentation to the board regarding the 202425 LCAP of the Santa Cruz County Career Advancement Charter School.
Thank you, President Roth, and good afternoon, everyone. Welcome, Trustee Williams. I'm Sony Garra Sanson and I am here to present the LCAP for the Career Advancement Charter for you today. I want to start with gratitude to you all for your ongoing support, to our superintendent for your support and your trust in building these programs. And of course, to my colleagues, my alternative ed colleagues and our business department, maintenance operations. It's a, it's a team effort. You're going to see that our slides look similar. We collaborate. And I was thinking before presenting today how different it would be to be like on my own. And I don't feel that way here. And I really appreciate Jen, you know, giving me the nudge of like, hey, don't forget to do this. You have to do that. It's, it's great to be part of this team. So wanted to start with that bit of gratitude to, to everyone here. Our, our mission on the next slide, I, I wanted to provide an overview also is to help high school, sorry, adult students earn their high school diploma or equivalency while gaining skills and whatever, whatever path that's going to take them on. And so while we are part of the county office, we are in our own department, which is Career and Adult Learning Services. And we work closely as well with community partners to serve our adult students in Santa Cruz County. Next slide, please. I love this picture. This is Jesus Oreas and he's our community organizer there giving out a diploma. I think this was just this time, this last month. And what's important on this slide is that last sentence there. And I think that this is true in the, in the Career Advancement Charter. It's also true in alternative ed. It's true, it's part of the work that, that we do here at the county offices. We meet people wherever they are on their journey. And so, and actually I forgot to mention on my first slide, the, the note, the message on the graduation cap. Would you mind clicking back a couple of slides? I wanted to share that with you. One of our adult students made her, her cap and it says, "Más vale tarde que nunca." And that essentially means better late than never. And so we have adult students my age and older. We have students who needed more time after being alternative education students. And so really that's meeting people where they are, giving them more time to, to finish and keeping the, the door open. Slide, if you could go, thank you. So who we are, we have seven sites across the county. They're listed there. We do serve students 18 and older. All of our services are free, of course, and like I said, within the county. So we have services here at the annex. We have a presence, our biggest presence at Sequoia Schools, which is in Watsonville. We have teachers at both probation success centers, which is a partnership with adult probation in the north and the south. And we also serve students in our correctional facilities at the main jail, at the Blaine Street Women's Facility and at Roundtree. And we are an independent study program where students are able to have the flexibility they need and then meet with their, their teachers weekly. We also, on the next slide, I wanted to share a little bit about the additional supports that we offer around career readiness. Specifically, that's a, a main focus for us at the Career Advancement Charter. Working on resumes with students, interview skills and helping them determine where their interests lie and what kind of work is going to be lucrative for their families. And so really looking at what pathways make sense based on industry data. And so like I said, so they can support their families. We also are committed to working with Cabrillo College for our students who are interested in co-enrolling and either taking non-credit courses or for-credit courses. Offering that transition support. I don't know if you've ever taken a Cabrillo class, but the application process can be a little bit challenging. And so we directly assist our students with that as well as the FAFSA, Federal Application for, for Student Assistance, or the Dream Act, which is funding for students who are not citizens. And so we work with each student if that's what they're interested in. And then we offer in Watsonville classes, ESL classes, our own, or students can, can co-enroll at Cabrillo. Culinary, culinary arts. We have tutorial sessions, we offer digital literacy and we provide childcare. So just a little bit about some of the supports we offer in our Career Advancement Charter. So this is a repeat slide. Jen Isant Gonzalez told you a little bit about the LCAP. So we have the same obligation. And just as she said, it's a document that doesn't work perfectly for our programs. And so we, we make it as real as we can. And it's hard to capture everything that we do. I, I know I was getting that sense from when Jen was talking. It's hard to capture everything we do and put it in this document. But that is, that is the intention of what we're going to share, what I'm going to share with you today. On the next slide, the annual update. I listed our three goals here. Similarly to alternative ed, we focus goal one on achievement. The second one really around student support. And our third goal has been around outreach and community engagement. There's a lot of parent language and family language in the LCAP. And for us, you know, we have adult students. So we don't, we don't focus on parent or family engagement. We focus on the student and then around engaging with the community. And so you'll see some slight changes in our new goals, but they'll be largely centered around these three topics. And while those goals will change slightly, these goals, these three have guided our programming and will continue to be the basis for our new LCAP as well as our own WASC self-study, which will take place this coming school year. During this 2324, what I can share with you as far as the annual update is that while there were some material differences, our planned actions and services were carried out as explained in the annual update report. Next slide. So I have here for you just a couple of screenshots of metrics that I think that I wanted to highlight. We have many of our own local metrics because again, the, the dashboard, the California dashboard doesn't work so well for the Career Advancement Charter. So these are some of the things that, that we measure, enrollment and ADA. Those are two different things, right? But you can see the gradual increase of students from our baseline at 132. So enrollment means any student who came through. And doesn't matter how long they stayed. So over the three-year span, you can see that we more than doubled in there in year three with 361 students. ADA is much lower, however, there's a gradual increase there annually as well. The post-secondary transition rate measures how many students are going on to either community college, technical training and workforce. We include workforce there and this data is self-reported. You can see there as well gradual, or sorry, increase of student performance there. The CASAS Educational Function, Functional Level, that is an adult assessment tool that we use. It is one of the measures that the Adult Ed Education Consortium uses. And we've seen a steady increase there. I think what's important with the CASAS is that we have developed a system for testing students. And now we're able to capture their literacy and math gains. And then lastly, that, that last row there is around credit accrual. So we measure how many students are completing 45 credits or more per year. Now that may not sound like a lot. I think that in the comprehensive, high school students are earning, you know, far more than that. However, we know that our students need to pause sometimes if they're working and they need to not focus on school. And we also have students who are leaving corrections and then connecting with a teacher outside of, of the facility. And so we have a lot of movement, similar to alternative education. And so we're very proud of those numbers of students who are able to persist and earn that amount of credits a school year. So they're to a gain reflected over the three years. So moving to our new LCAP, as, as I said, the goals will be similar. However, what I would, what I would point out here with the achievement is that we are focusing more on that post-secondary piece and really wanting to work with students on finding and securing those opportunities once they leave. And we are also, we included a new action around assessment. So broadening our scope of how we're assessing to include other platforms besides CASAS so that we can further guide instruction and instructional choices. Having bilingual support is paramount in our programs. And so we continue to ensure that we have support staff who can support our students. And also want to maintain and add an ESL course as well as professional learning for our, our entire staff, not just the teachers. Our next goal, student support. Again, so this is, it's lengthy. I'm not going to read that whole goal, but we did change it a little bit. Again, focusing on the post-secondary piece and wanting to make sure also that some of our students are earning their high school diploma, attending ESL classes or our Plazas Comunitarias classes, which are Spanish literacy, because they want to gain skills for, for their personal reasons, to, to help their students, their own children who are in the elementary or even high school, to help them do better in school. Some of our students want to prepare to earn their United States citizenship and/or engage with their communities. So our students come for all kinds of reasons. They're not all there for the same reason and we wanted to include that here. So we're going to be adding in our new LCAP additional career technical education sections. We have, will be, we're looking to hire a second transition specialist. And we've increased our childcare services to four days a week. The, the center was very well attended this past year. And so we're adding two more days. So we'll have care available four days per week. And then we want to add enrichment opportunities that may include art, music, interest-based, social, emotional learning, kind of healing workshops, and then also experiential learning. The teachers want to do some outings, do some field trips. And, and lastly, as part of our Adult Ed Consortium, we want to, in collaboration, hire student workers. And so for, so those students who want to get experience with us, that's one of our goals as well. Finally, in goal three, we have our outreach goal. And this is a picture of our two previously transitioned specialists. Stephanie on the right has taken a, a new position as a project coordinator. She's still supporting with the transition support. And they're at an event, you know, they're tabling as part of our Adult Education Consortium. And I want to extend my gratitude to both of them as well for all the work that they do. So some highlights here include the student onboarding piece that we're very proud of. I think we, we probably had over 80 students attend in-person orientations just in semester two. That was a new strategy we tried this year and it was very successful. Instead of meeting them one at a time, we've started inviting them every Tuesday afternoon at 3:30. And it's been, it's been working really well. And then we'll continue, we want to continue with the collaboration with the goal consortium. As I mentioned, the greater opportunities for adult learning. And one thing I do want to mention too, is that cross-department collaboration. I think that, at least in my tenure here, I, this is the most successful I've seen. Our cohesion and the synergy between our Suenos program, which is a youth work development program, our adult high school diploma and our alternative education. And the way that students are able to kind of, to go seamlessly between programs, it's, it's working really well. And so we wanted to call that out in our LCAP or in our new LCAP. On the next slide, what I included here, this image is from our budget overview. And again, there's the for parents language. And just what this is showing is how much we budgeted for students who count as the unduplicated count and how much we actually spent. So you can see that we're allocating more funds. And this is again, a snapshot. And so that is the one that I chose to include here. The next, the next slide is very busy and there's a lot of numbers. I figure that you could, it's in your report and that you could have it if you wanted to look at that because it does include information from 2324 and then also going forward into 2425. And what stands out to me here is just the, the budget is growing and it's based on bringing in more students, right? And so being able to add relevant programming is, it's something that we're very committed to doing. And lastly, I wanted to share with you some of our student feedback. Many of our students replied to both our, our student advisories where we're having a dialogue with them. And then we also have student surveys. And I think what come, what is highlighted for me in their responses is around the enjoyment of being part of a community, of being able to learn, the gratitude that they share with us for the flexibility and the commitment of their teachers. And really feeling like our team goes above and beyond. And I think that's representative of the county office in general, really wanting to do the best by our community. And I feel like that is reflected here. And I feel like that is reflected here, so I wanted to share that with you all. And that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that may have come up for y'all.
Moving on here, we will now invite members of the public who are present to speak on this matter. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will now open up for questions from the board. Do any trustees have any questions or comments? Rara thing. That was a visual thumbs up from Sandra, Zandra, just for the notes.
I know, I got it.
This is show up on, on the tape.
Thank you, Sandra.
Bruce.
Well, it certainly worth saying pretty much everything we said to Dr. Isaiah Gonzalez earlier, that the heart and the skill that you apply is so admirable. I've loved the CAC. It's just been, the whole time, you know, it came about after I'd been on the board for a couple of years. And just growing and flourishing and turning into such a wonderful thing. And the comments are the proof. Of other things too, including your report, which shows your progress. Congratulations.
Thank you, trustee Van Allen.
I want to piggyback off of what, what he said. I want to mention the fact that, well, I want to call out the ADA, I believe that goes 175 from 155, which is ambitious, specifically in this climate, specifically how ADA is and enrollment is trending in the state. You know, the fact that ours is actually going up, I think is a big testament as to our programs and how effective and they are and how they attract, you know, students to, to learn, to continue their education. So just wanted to call that out and say congratulations. It's ambitious, but it's, I'm excited.
Thank you, trustee Sanchez.
I'll comment on something that I really loved is the expansion of the childcare from two to four days. I mean, I think that's, you know, incredibly important for so many of the, the folks in our community that, you know, this would really serve, you know, and, you know, childcare is so difficult to obtain and expensive. And, you know, it is such a barrier to finishing, you know, your educational journey or just continuing. So I just want to call that out as something really great that I think is going to be transformative in, you know, reaching those goals, those ADA goals. I think it'll definitely be attractive for a lot of parents who want, you know, to continue their education journey.
Thank you, trustee Estrada. Thank you for a concise presentation as the other, and I appreciate it. Talking from a personal experience, I will say thank you for all of the work you are doing. I had a child who did adult education and piggybacking on not just childcare, but funding going towards field trips. And really even adults don't know what's available and out there. And having the opportunity to see certain things in action can kind of open up their eyes and the possibilities. So thank you for seeing that as an opportunity and thank you again for your work.
Thank you.
Certainly.
I'd love to also, you mentioned, you mentioned the word trust. And, and I think that, you know, I, I think of that word often in terms of the trust that our students and our community puts in us. And that they're, they're going to be helped along on their journey. And, and many, many of them who have experienced a lot of reasons not to trust in, in, in the system or in organizations or institutions. And I feel like this, the trust that they give us and the, the dignity with which you lead as, as a leader and, and the programs that, that you're helping to build and our teams are helping to build, it's really a reflection of the respect that we have and that we are standing to show to our community that we are, we are worthy of their trust. And so thank you for your leadership. Thank you for continuing to build these, these programs. And, you know, when I think about what we're, what our alternative education programs and what the CAC is doing for, for our students in terms of the opportunities and, and really honoring the, the, the great things that they bring to, to our schools. Again, I feel so much pride. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think what we're seeing is we came up with this and they have responded. And their response is because of, I believe, we're listening and seeing and asking about the needs and where we can be most supportive. And it, it, it's fantastic what we, what we are doing. And I can't wait to see where we go.
Thank you, president.
Thank you. Any further? I hereby declare the 2024-25 LCAP of the Santa Cruz County Career Advancement Charter School closed. Thank you. Now it's changed to Ms. Ms. Rara Benson, the County Board of Education, will consider approval of the 2024-25 Local Control Accountability Plan of the Santa Cruz County Career Advancement Charter School at our next board meeting on June 27th, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. We will now move to item 8.3. I hereby declare open the public hearing regarding the proposed 2024 budget of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education. The board is here to listen at this time and will not be taking action until next week. Staff will make their opening presentation to the board regarding the proposed 2024-25 budget of the Santa Cruz Office of Education. Public comment and input will be received by the board from individuals wishing to speak. Each individual will be limited to three minutes. The board will have an opportunity to ask the presenters clarifying questions. Then the public hearing will be closed. Leanne Reyes, Deputy Superintendent Business Services, you may now make your opening presentation to the board regarding, regarding the proposed 2024-25 budget of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education.
Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. I know this is the highlight coming up. So everything that you just heard about, all the amazing work that's happening in our alt ed and our CAC programs, all of that amazing work is included in our budget. And that's why there's a very specific order in which we present these items to you. You get to hear about their plans and then you get to hear about how our budget is, is being set up for the 2425 fiscal year. So if we could move forward. First of all, you know, I just don't sit in the back room by myself and prepare this budget. There's a lot of fingers in the pie, a lot of people get involved. And so we would be remiss if we did not thank all of our department managers, our coordinators and support staff, or all of their help within the development of this year's budget. And also a very special thank you for our internal business team. And that is the team of Natia Ambrosi, Tara Lee, Brooke Rosso, Shay Sexton, and then Michelle Kennedy and Melissa Lopez. So without all their hard work, this wouldn't be happening. So you can take those kudos back to the team for remiss, Michelle. Next slide. So here's a quick list of what today's topics are. This probably isn't anything different from what you're used to seeing from me. So we'll go ahead and start with our budget reporting process, move into the variances between second and estimated actuals, the assumptions that we use, some of the major assumptions for preparing the budget, an overview of what that budget actually looks like, what's next, and then recommendations. So this is like a really interesting period. This is the time of the year where we tell each other, don't tell me this year, next year, because it's super confusing, especially at this time, because we are right there where it's highlighted in blue when we think about where are we with our 2324, our current year budget. We're at a point where we not only have to put, take time to prepare our estimated actuals, but we also have to use those in preparation for next year or our 2425 budget adoption. Our budget adoption is due no later than July 1st to the state. And so you can see that we are trying to get those ending, estimated ending fund balances, because that helps us with the development of what we need to do for the 2425 fiscal year. I think the last thing I just want to say, which I always say is like the disclaimer commercial, this is truly a snapshot in time. This is information being presented to you is based on the best available information for us. And it's most certain to change. And you've heard that once already this evening as well. So let's go ahead and take a look at what changed between second interim, which was the last time I talked to you about budget, and our estimated actuals. Bless you. So this particular slide, and I want to make sure you realize, this is a combination of our unrestricted and restricted budgets. At second interim, you can see we started off with our total revenues and transfers in of $71.5 million. At our estimated actuals, that was increased to $73.7 million or an increase in revenue of about $2.2 million. Our expenditures were at $70 million. They increased to $73.6 million or another increase of approximately $3.5 million. That leaves us with a projected deficit or increase. At second interim, we thought we were going to have a $1.3 million increase, but now that's whittled down to about $56,000 or a change of negative 1.2. I'll get into the details of these numbers on our following slides. And our estimated ending fund balance at second interim was a combined total of $36 million. Now it's about $35 million or again, that $1.2 million number. It's important to remember that a chunk of this money is actually set aside. So if people say, oh, you have a $35 million ending fund balance, that's true. But 6.9 of it, which is that line up there that says restricted fund balance, 6.9 of that is kind of off the table, if you will, as far as I spend however you want, because those are all restricted and tied to specific grants, federal dollars, et cetera. So that would leave us with a unrestricted or assigned ending fund balance of, from $29 million down to $28,178,000. The nice thing about estimated actuals is it does help us a lot when we're preparing for unaudited actuals. When we think about that chart that I showed you just a few slides ago, unaudited actuals will come to you in the September timeframe. And if we do a lot of work now at estimated actuals, it's, it does help with unaudited actuals. Because at the point when we're trying to work with unaudited actuals, then we're really focusing on, you know, our accruals, what money did we not get yet? Do we need to set up receivables? What bills do we still need to pay? Do we need to set up payables? So having a right and tight and as good as guess, we can get it estimated. It's really helpful for us in that year-end closing process. So looking at our county school service general fund 01, you can see that our revenue estimate, the very, very first item up there, we speak to the changes between the 2324 second interim estimated actuals, that $1.2 million. That change primarily came, 1.253 of it actually is on the unrestricted side and only 20,000 of it came from restricted. So our combined revenue actually came in higher due to a, an increase in our restricted for the student support and enrichment block grant that was recognized in our books. And that was a large number. And that's also one of those grants that's like over multiple years. So we were recognizing the dollars and now with a good chance that some of that will roll over into future years. As I've pointed out in the past, Melissa's always really, really good at keeping track of what year did it come in? How long do we have to spend it? What are we spending it on and aligning it with, with our plans? Let me see. So the remaining improvement that we have seen in our expenditures on the unrestricted side was because we take our budgets and we reduce them down to like the minimal levels. We say, look, we think, we think this is what we're going to be spending, but some departments weren't able to spend all their money or they choose not to and they choose to carry it over. So this is really addressing the third bullet on your slide that says that our expenses increased by 3.4 million. Now this was primarily due to transfers out to our special reserve fund for capital outlay projects, Fund 40. And that probably sounds a little familiar because the board just recently authorized us to open up a Fund 40 and start moving dollars into that fund. And then also the debt service fund, Fund 56. So those transfers out, offset by, again, what I just mentioned about departments not fully using all their personnel changes and unfilled vacancies are now starting to come out of the budget because they're not going to be spent or reduced services and supplies that offset those transfers out. And those values were approximately another one and a half million dollars. So it was almost a wash between the debt service and then the money falling back out of our, our budget. The, again, important thing to note, these aren't our final numbers, as I mentioned earlier. More than likely, our expenses will continue to decrease, which could result in a larger ending fund balance. And this can be driven solely by the remaining balances on purchase orders or these extra work agreements that we have that are encumbered but not actually spent. You know, I shared this statistic with you last year at this time, but I thought it, for me, because I'm kind of a numbers nerd, I thought it'd be fun to share them with you again. So right now in our general fund or our county service fund, Fund 1, we have an estimated $4.5 million sitting in our financial statements in that encumbered status. So money that was committed but has yet to be spent. So this means that if the, that $4.5 million may or may not get spent, then that means our ending fund balance will come back up again. This $4.5 million amount split is spread out over approximately 1,700 budget codes. I always think that's kind of fun to look at. And my, my notes failed to print the rest of this, but I believe the value of anything that's $10,000 or less, so tiny numbers adds up to $1.5 million. So that just gives you a feel for the volume of data lines and, and things that makes it sometimes really hard to predict how, where exactly you're going to fall out at the end of the year after all the spending's done and all the POs are closed and all the bills are paid. Okay. So we're going to move into our assumptions for the 2425. If you're trying to follow along or if you want to make a note in the margin of your paper in, in your board packet, this, this piece that I'm talking about right now is on page 366. And I'll be bouncing back and forth throughout that board packet. So again, if you just want to make a note in the margin, that's fine. So our funded ADA assumptions, this chart's going to show the, the five years. You know, '22, '23 was our prior year, '23, '24 is the current. And then we have our budget year and the two subsequent years following. As, as we all know, districts throughout the state are experiencing declining enrollment, which also translates into, in many cases, declining ADA. Our COE alt ed programs are anticipating a slight decrease in enrollment in ADA for the subsequent years. But it's important to mention that the chart you're looking at, that title at the top, that's funded ADA, funded. And funded ADA is very different than actual ADA. So starting with the 2324 fiscal year, COEs were granted the ability for their funded ADA to be the greater of the current year, the prior year, or the new three-year prior year's average for LCFF revenue calculations. And I know some of this might be repeat information for some of you on the board, but I thought I'd share that just in case Ms. Williams isn't aware that we weren't granted that when districts were. This is often referred to as a smoothing technique or a smoothing methodology. So in the 2324 fiscal year, alt ed's actual estimate for ADA is 910. But due to the new funding calculation methodology, you can see on the chart, their funding's actually estimated to be based on 946. So we do get an advantage of, you know, that 30 some odd additional ADA. So I would just say that this is super important now to then recognize that difference between your actual and your funded ADA, because between your actual and your funded ADA, because on that three-year rolling average, we're going to see a lot more money coming in right now. But we will have an ADA cliff or a funding drop when the actual, you know, 910 rolls in through that calculation. So right now, in the next year or so, before those lower numbers start rolling into the calculation, we're looking really favorable, it's looking really favorable for us. Thank you. So for our revenue assumptions, we have up here our budget planning factors. Again, I like to show what we were looking at in 2223, our current years of what we used in 2324, and then our budget year, the 2425 on the way through 26 and 27. So the first thing that kind of pops off the page, of course, is our cost of living adjustment or the COLA and what's being used. If you compare to the school services may revise dartboard, you can see that the COE is using some very conservative rates to estimate its revenue. And we kind of chose to do this because there's still a bit of instability out there as far as the state budget is concerned. And so for that, we chose to use a 0% COLA, a 0% COLA, and then a modest 1.5% COLA. And you'll see on the next chart that I have how that compares in just a minute. Our lottery assumptions are fairly flat as always. And they, those two numbers for unrestricted and Prop 20 lottery, they really don't have a tendency to fluctuate very much. But those are the rates that we are using, again, tied back to the dartboard. And then our nine through 12 mandated block grant rate per ADA for charter and then also for our alt ed programs. So looking at the next page, thank you. It's the personnel assumptions or expenditure assumptions that we have set in. You can see also same pattern as far as five years being represented to you. Calsters, believe it, very steady right now, has been very steady for several years. We're thankful for steady, we like steady, we don't like volatile. Calpers, though, he's the bad brother in the family, I guess, because he bounces all over the place. He's been constantly going up and, you know, costing districts more and more and more money. I think the last time I talked to you, when we looked in those out years for Calpers, it was actually really pushing up against that 30% number. You can see it has softened a little, so that's actually a good sign. So for our budget, we're using the 27.05%, 27.6%, and then 28% for the third year out. Our health and welfare, we did do a slight increase on that as we did see some increases in our assumptions as far as costs going up for health and welfare. So we used an 8.5% throughout the three-year period. And then our FICA Medicare, unemployment and workers' compensation also have been fairly steady, especially if you look over there in that, the pink column there. At one point, you may recall during the COVID timeframe, that unemployment jumped way up. So that's actually not a type of, did go from 0.5 to 0.05. And it's also been fairly steady since then. The last little footnote is that our negotiations have been settled for the 2425 fiscal year and all bargaining units and unrepresented units, those costs are going, are reflected in this budget. And there's on page 333, if you want to look at anything extra, I'd suggest you look at that page because that has a very detailed listing of all of our assumptions that we used in building out this budget. So that's again, page 333, if you care to take a look at that later on. Okay. So items that were not included, hmm, well, as always, I'm still waiting. This was for those of you that have been following school business for a long time. When the May revised was released, we were really stunned at how short it was. It was like only eight pages and it didn't have any detail in it. It was just, this is what we're thinking to do. And it wasn't really that different from what we had seen earlier. And it was very lacking in information and guidance as far as how to move forward after the May revised was finalizing our budgets. So there was still at the time, a lot of negotiations occurring and the timing was such that most of our information that we needed wasn't available to us because it was still developing. So what's not in the budget, it's usually not in the budget on purpose, it's intentional. There are lots of things that change between the May revised, especially this year. All of my colleagues throughout the state and at the state meeting I was at, they're like, we don't even know sometimes what to put in there because there's just not enough guidance, it's not clear enough. So we're going to be waiting for our, the explicit nature of trailer bill language to come out so that we can then determine with a little more definition, what exactly to then come back and include in our 24 or 25 budget. So as, as we all know, this is a classic case of the devils in the details. And, and we're waiting for those details to come out before we make any more changes. So this won't, this won't be changing much until we'll see what happens at the 45-day revise. Okay. So for our proposed adopted budget, this is our, broken out by our unrestricted and restricted. And then of course, in the far right-hand corner, those are our, our totals. Again, as a reminder, we use that 0% COLA on our major revenue source, which is our LCFF, which is approximately, what, $28 million in our total revenue? And so our budget is going to be for our unrestricted side, about 32.9, almost $33 million of revenue and transfers in. And then going down the column, our expenditures currently are estimated at 34.9 million. Having this with a projected deficit of 1.9 million. As you know, we try really hard to put everything in that adopted budget. So if we have vacancies, we assume we're going to hire everybody on July 1 and keep them all the way through June 30. And as we also all know, that doesn't happen very often, but you have to plan for that. So our estimated ending unrestricted balance would be $26 million. Then going over to our second column, our revenues coming in would be approximately $36 million. Our expenses going out, about 37.3 million, leaving us with also a deficit of 1.6 million or an ending fund balance of 5.3 million. We're really, I feel really fortunate to work here because we do some really great conservative budgeting and restricted showing a budget, restricted budget showing a deficit of that much, not, not scary. It's because we usually have money that was left over from prior years, especially as we're finishing up all of our SRR grant monies coming through. And so for that, seeing a deficit is not a really bad thing on that restricted side of the budget. It just means we're in like year two or year three of that cycle of monies we've already received. And also we do a great job early in the year in their spring planning timeframe to meet with everybody who's maybe paying for people out of restricted or limited categorical dollars. And then we, you know, have a conversation with them. Are you planning to keep this person? Are you planning to get more grant funding for this person? Can your budget afford to hold them on the unrestricted side pending getting grant money in? And so we do have a lot of conversations about that. So that process and seeing that size of a deficit on our restricted side of the budget might feel scary, but all in all, it's not that bad. So at the end of the day, for a combined total, we end up with approximately $31.4 million. Of that, 5.3 million again is restricted, has strings attached. So our unrestricted budget would come in around $26 million. All right. So I kind of, sorry, jumped ahead, but I just spoke to this about not all of our revenue assumptions are, they're usually very conservative, our positions are assumed full staffing, and then also we assume too, some increased costs. This is a new slide that I just kind of wanted to pop in for the group as a whole. Some of you that have been on my budget committee, a sub ad hoc committee with the board, you may have seen this slide before because it's one of the things, I think, Abel, you may have seen this when you were on my subcommittee. And I do feel like it's a really powerful slide also in a way to kind of let you know how, how we do manage things here at the COE. So what you're looking at, because the print's very tiny, is a snapshot of how our ending fund balance on the, on the unrestricted side of the budget is how it's, what it looks at when it's estimated. So that's the bar that's kind of that olive green color lower and versus where it always ends up, which is the forest green or that Kelly green bar to the right. So this is just to help demonstrate what I was just saying. Here's a historical trend of where we've been since 2013, 14, all the way up through our, you know, the two, last two bars is our 2324 estimated actuals. And then the olive bars out to the right are what our budget represents, where we think we're going to end with our multi-year projections. And I won't spend any more time on that. I just want to kind of help you see and maybe get a, gain a greater comfort level. Like I said, my little ad hoc committee has seen this before, but maybe not the board as a whole. And I just thought it'd be helpful, helpful to share. So major items that are contributing to the projected unrestricted deficit are the fact that our negotiations are now in this budget for 2425. That includes increased health and welfare costs. And then any staff that may have been funded from the unrestricted resources right now, as I had mentioned earlier, may be shifting over to restricted once we receive new grant awards or other types of funding. The other thing really driving this is our increased Calpers and health and welfare costs and one-time costs for some tech infrastructure improvements. And also we have started setting money aside for additional building maintenance or potential building expansion, as we discussed in our Fund 40 conversation earlier. All right. These are some of the assumptions, assumptions that we used for the NYPD. Again, I encourage you to look at that page 333 in your packets for a detailed list of assumptions. Again, negotiations, step and column for a certificated and classified 1.3 and 1.2 assumption is being used. The STIRS rate, 19.1, PERS, we already talked about him. He doesn't deserve to be talked about again, does he? He's so bad, he's so high. Health and welfare increases. We also adjusted and removed all of the one-time revenues and expenditures from our budget. So that would be the SR2, SR3, A to G, EEF, all these special grants. And then again, our COLA, 001 and a half. And here's a little slide I was just mentioning a few moments ago about COLA and how much it can change over, change over the course of time and how it can start off as one thing. You know, we had such a fantastic year in 2324. They, when we first started talking about 2324, they said it was going to be a 3.6 COLA and it ended up being an 8.22 unheard of. I keep trying to remind all of my CBOs out there that the, these, what they're calling low COLA years is not a low COLA year, it's a normal COLA year. It's more like this is what we would expect to see. And those of us who've been around the business for a long time can appreciate that we see something that looks like a 1.07 and a 2.9 and a 3, and we would have been really excited about that a few years back. So again, we're more returning to the norm. And then in that very last line, that shows what the school services dartboard was suggesting COLA may be. And then again, what our assumptions were in order to be conservative in our, in our numbers. Okay. So when we look at our multi-year projection and again, in your packets, if you're trying to follow along, this, the data that backs up these summary pages can be found on pages 350 through 363. So starting with our budget year one, the 2425, which is the second column up there, our total revenues and transfers and expenditures, sorry, revenues and transfers in is approximately $68.6 million. Again, this is our combined. Our expenditures out are estimated to come in around 72.2 or a deficit of 3.6 million. That ties back to the slide you just saw a few minutes ago. And of that, we have our restricted ending fund balance projected at 5.3. Our operating fund balance around $26 million. Rolling that ending fund balance of 31.4 million over to the top of column, I guess that's 123, fiscal year 2526. We start off with a $31 million. We are anticipating 67 million in revenue, 70 million in expenses for a deficit of 3,620, with an ending combined fund balance of 28 million or in our general operating fund, 21.2 unrestricted, 4 million in restricted. And then rolling that $28 million up to the top of the last column for 2627. We have a total combined revenue of 65 million, expenses of 69, showing a deficit of 4.2 million with an ending fund balance of 24 million, of which 2.7 is restricted and 21.4 is unrestricted. Again, knowing those are ultra-conservative numbers, we will be getting more revenue coming in potentially with our COLAs and also bearing in mind that we do have that declining enrollment or rather ADA funded ADA rolling in as well. So it'll be interesting to see how this number moves as the data becomes more mature and available to us. So our criterion standards, this is also a really important document. I think if boards also don't have time to read a lot, maybe just reading the criterion standards is a really important thing for them so they can see where things are in the health, overall health of the, of the organization. So we did have a, this is a series of met or not met. The summary review, again, in your board packets starts on page 212 and it'll finish on page 244. And again, we're just looking at the not met standards because all of those require an explanation. So we had a not met about the projected change in LCFF revenue. But again, that's based on our conservative COLA or non-inclusion of, of COLA in our budget and also the cliff of ADA. And then also coming out of our LCF revenue, it's really interesting the way they, the state set this up. But if you transfer any money from your deferred maintenance account, which is Fund 14, now it comes out as a deduction to your LCFF. And in prior times, it was seen as a transfer out, coming out. So it was a lot easier to see, but that's kind of buried in there also. So on the next slide, your projected ratio of salary benefit costs, there were changes because of settlement being processed and budgeted in the 2425 budget. I do want to let you know that at our June 27th board meeting, we will, I will be bringing to you all estimated costs for all employees and those costs which have been incorporated into this budget. So when we come next week and you hopefully approve the budget, then we will be able to also at that time, give you the public disclosure that outlines what the costs are for the settlements. Our next standard, projected operating revenues are within the standard for the budget in two subsequent years. Revenues change dramatically also because we're spending down all of those one-time stimulus funds and also any unearned revenue has now shifted out from 2324 to the budget year of 2425. And that's a significant change. And then also projected expenditures, it's the same thing. Anything tied to the one-time federal stimulus dollars are now lower. I think pretty much every district in our county and probably the state are going to get the same one as everyone's spending down their, their dollars. We've got the next standard, S2, use of ongoing expenditures with one-time resources. Since we have fallen out of hold harmless status a couple of years ago now, it's anticipated that we will still continue utilizing the fund balance, at least at this snapshot, for ongoing expenses in order to cover our increased negotiated raises as well as employer contributions per STIRS and health and welfare. So again, as of this snapshot, as again, the year and more information comes available to us, this could change. So this is again, just our ultra-conservative look at it. Standard S5, our anticipated, we're anticipating a decrease in contributions to help support the new teacher project. They did come up with a, a new kind of a scale of how much they charge people for providing the services for new teacher project. And then also the career and adult ed learning is doing so awesome over there under your leadership, Sony. As far as attendance and people coming, we anticipate we won't be needing to help assist in terms of a contribution with that particular program as well. And then of course, our long-term commitment is our COP or our COPs of certificated participation for the purchase of this building. So that's going to be on our criterion standards as a not met until the COP, you know, gets paid off. Again, the current estimate, the current or projection for that loan that goes through 2037, but I have a feeling we're going to beat that date. All right. Yeah, this one's kind of like, I put in the no-brainer category, like of course, because, you know, COLA was at 0.76 and then they're saying, woo, it's 1.07, which means most everyone's getting a negative COLA because their ongoing costs exceed the amount of new money they're going to be getting. And so since we settled for a modest 2% on our salary schedule, you know, sends up the red flag like, what, you're giving away more than what you're actually getting in new money? And that's going to probably again, be anybody who has a settlement this year, they're also going to end up with that. So what's next? So the 2425 adopted budget will be updated with, at the 45-day revise as we receive more information on the state budget. more information on the state budget and also the distribution of federal funds becomes more known. Again, uh, trailer bill language should be available and any other material adjustments at that time will be made. Again, uh, key word there too is material adjustments. I do also want to say that, um, we had a lovely meeting with our budget board, budget subcommittee. Thank you for your time. It's very important. And as you go through your packets, sorry, I have a little tickle in my throat. You're going to see that there's a whole lot more in there besides just the general fund 01. So I wanted to let you know that all the other funds, so that's our charter fund nine, the Sopa pass-through fund 10, our adult ed fund 11, child development 12, cafeteria 13, deferred maintenance 14, our special reserve fund 1740, our debt service fund 56. We did review those at a high level with the subcommittee and all of those funds are in positive standing and we're projecting to end with positive cash balances. But I would be here like probably a little bit longer if I went through all those funds with you in detail. So your subcommittee did their work and they looked at those and I believe we got a thumbs up on those as well. So, um, that's a great thing. So spoiler alert, we're going to be recommending that you approve this at the next board meeting. And, um, as this is a public hearing, no action at this time is required by the board.
Now, uh, we will invite members of the public who are present to speak on this matter. We'll have three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Come out of the woodwork. Moving on, I will now open it, uh, for questions and comments from the board. Do any trustees have any questions or comments?
So the SIR funds are completely gone, right? That's been?
We have until September to spend them and they're not completely gone. We are using a chunk of that money to do our summer school programs.
Okay, but they will be gone in September if we don't use it.
Yes, we're going to use it also.
I, I have no doubt about that. Thank you.
Any other comments? The budget committee appreciates the time spent with us too. Mutual admiration there. Okay, um, no other comments? Okay.
If I could also.
Sorry.
Yep. If I could just add my, my thanks, uh, to Leanne and to the amazing team. This has been a, a challenging, uh, year for us in many ways and, um, uh, and I, it's just, it's, it's wonderful to have such expertise and such, such, uh, commitment from, from this amazing team. And I'm so grateful, uh, for all the hard work and for, for helping to not only make sure that, that, uh, we continue to move forward in a positive direction and, and in a, in a way that can serve the, uh, our students, but also to, uh, to really represent excellence in this work for all the districts and to be a support for all those districts. Because, um, uh, I, I feel like we, our business, uh, division is, is one of integrity and professionalism and, um, and, uh, really does such important backbone work for, for every single, uh, student in, in our county. So thank you for all your amazing work, Leanne, through the amazing business services team.
And yet you have more in front of you over the next few weeks, so we're behind you. Uh, I now, uh, declare, uh, the proposed 2024 budget of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education closed. Thank you, Ms. Reyes. The county board of education will consider approval of the 2024 budget, uh, of the Santa Cruz County Office of Education at our next board meeting on June 27th, 2000, uh, 2024 at 4pm. Moving along. Right place. So we are now going into new business. I guess I reopen, reopen, whatever. Okay. Just want to be right. 9.1, Proposition 28 Arts and Music in Schools Annual Report. Dr. Sabah?
Yes, uh, this is a exciting opportunity for us to support our, our, uh, students. As, as you know, Prop 28, I'm sure that, uh, Mr. Rice is going to be, uh, talking about this, but, uh, an opportunity to, to support, um, the arts, uh, component of, of our students' education and, and, uh, we're going to be hearing a little bit about how we're going to be utilizing these new, these new resources for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Sabah. And we'll be here in just, just a little bit, I promise. Good, I just want to start by saying. I just want to start by, by saying, uh, good evening to the board members and, uh, to the cabinet members that are here and, uh, good evening to the, the couple folks that are left in the audience here. Welcome to our, our newest board member, Trustee Williams. I'm so glad to have you on the team here. And, uh, yes, as, as Dr. Sabah mentioned, uh, I'm here to, uh, I'm here to request approval of our Prop 28 Arts and Music in Schools Annual Report. This is a standardized report, uh, to be submitted to the state through their portal and it requires just a couple of fields. If we could go one slide forward from there. This is the form that, uh, that I'll be requesting approval of and submitting, uh, once, once approved. It's pretty darn simple. It, it asks us to state how we spent the funds and, uh, the number of equivalent, uh, full-time equivalent teachers, classified and other personnel that, uh, um, were paid out of that fund for, for the year 2324, uh, the number of pupils that were served and the number of school sites, uh, where this money went. However, our report will simply state, uh, that no funds were spent in the 2324 school year. And then tho- those boxes, uh, will all have zeros in them for this year. I don't want to waste your time however, so I thought that I could take a couple of minutes, uh, and tell you how we do plan to spend the money next year. As, uh, um, as a couple of my colleagues mentioned, that we went through our, uh, programmatic self-study this year through the Western Association of Schools and Colleges and we conducted a thorough self-study. This involved many participant, many participants, uh, from students and educators to parents and community partners. We collected feedback from a number of forums, including focus groups and meetings and surveys, et cetera. And in many of those, we talked about art. Uh, and so what we found through pulling all that qualit- qualitative and quantitative data was, we had certainly had some strengths and we had some room to, to grow. As far as strengths go, we found, we have strong partnerships in the arts communities. These partnerships provide students access to a diversity of perspectives, talents and media. And our art programming is often collaborative and connected to novels, texts and themes, jointly developed with our classroom teachers. Many of our students and families reported also their appreciation for having experts in the, in the arts in our schools. And several students even reported renewed engagement in school due to the art connections that, that were available. And the feedback produced some needs too, and really the, the needs were that these things are great and we want more. So, uh, we found, we found that there were requests for additional artists and, uh, certificated art teachers. We found that, uh, while there were a number of relevant art opportunities, uh, more of those opportunities would be welcome and, uh, as always, uh, more time and more supplies. This leads to our plan, as the funds are annual, we believe the funds would best be hot, uh, best be spent, uh, by hiring a full-time itinerant, uh, certificated art teacher in the future, and we're currently recruiting for that now. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and the request, uh, of course, again, is, is simply, uh, approval of the annual report, which is that one page.
There any questions, comments? Bruce?
I have a question. I just think this is really important. Excuse me. I probably say it about everything we do that it's really important and it extends to our mission. I was actually, uh, got to have the privilege of running the William James Association Community Youth Arts Program. And helped, helped expand it in the COE and, um, so important and especially that that program arose because the William James Association had for years been running a, what was called the prison arts project or arts and corrections, where again, professional artists were paid to go work with inmate California prisons. And that was one of the only prison programs that has ever shown a reduction in recidivism was the prison arts project. And the reason was not that it made everybody an artist, but that it just gave people who had had some kind of tough time in their life, that's why they were in prison or in juvenile hall or whatever, a chance to learn, to look inside, to express themselves, to find other ways to communicate than just physical violence or whatever the situation was. And, um, and the professional artists are also then gainfully employed and able to pursue their art and in a socially constructive way, to be back to the community. So it's a totally wonderful program. If I could fund this with 30 artists instead of just a couple, you know, I'd be for it. I'd vote for it. I don't have the money myself. So anyway, I just want to emphasize how important this is and I'm glad that we make it a focus.
I, I couldn't agree more. We continue to rely on, uh, we continue to rely on the William James, uh, uh, program. We are also, um, supportive of the, uh, Santa Cruz Arts Foundation at this point and we simply just want to grow both of those, uh, bring in a, a certificated teacher to, to support all of it all the way around. Thank you.
Okay. We need a, a motion and, and your report. Okay. Uh, so is there a motion on Johnny's report?
Move approval of the annual report for the Prop 28 Arts and Music in Schools.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Austin. So, Oscar, your vote.
Yes.
Yep. Rest of the board, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
9.2, uh, approval, approve the arts, music and instructional materials, the AMIM Discretionary Block Grant Spending Plan for 2022 through 2026 for all the ed. Dr. Sabah?
Sure, yes. I'd like to just, uh, share that, um, I think these two are very importantly to see side by side. This was put in place before the passage of Proposition 28 and, uh, really was, is discretionary in that it allows us, um, to use it for some of, you know, arts, music instruction or for other costs. It was discretionary in nature. And, um, so I think it's, uh, uh, one of the things you'll be hearing from, uh, from, uh, Johnny's report is that, uh, we made the decision to utilize that discretionary, uh, for operational costs to free up some, our general fund, knowing that we're going to be investing in, in the arts in, uh, this, this coming, uh, school year. And, um, so.
Thank you for that context, Dr. Spie. I appreciate that. And, uh, as you heard from, from, from Ferris there, uh, while this sounds really similar to the Prop 28 grant that I was just talking about, it is different. It is a discretionary block grant and with this one, I'm requesting approval of the spending plan. Uh, and, uh, while the arts and music and instructional materials are, are some ways that these funds can be spent, there are other discretionary possibilities and you'll see circled and read there, uh, uh, operational costs such as health and welfare and retirement contribution increases. And there are with, with the, the block grants, some exclusionary, uh, um, uh, expenditures. And so what we're proposing is that the grant funds be spent, uh, as allowed here, uh, on operational expenses, uh, specifically health and welfare and retirement contribution increases in alternative education. We can go to the next slide. That's the, that's the amount of the discretionary block grant there. We go on, go on from there. Broken down, of course, uh, with indirect costs. And one more. This would free up, uh, general funds monies, uh, which as you can see, um, would, would still be, uh, having a, a good amount of it going to, um, uh, the arts. We'd also this way be able to, to build in CTE partnerships, contracts, uh, staff courses and materials. And in addition to, to that, uh, we'd spend some of the funds, uh, on professional development and even things like, uh, school beautification and student transportation, specifically a, a couple of needed vans for those field trips that we mentioned earlier and, um, other enrichment opportunities and even community service. And, uh, again, that's, that's the, the request. Uh, the request is that, uh, um, uh, you approve the expenditure block grant, um, plan, which, uh, was in the amount of, uh, I don't have it right in front of me. I believe it was 516,000. Five eighteen, excuse me. And I'd be happy to take any questions, of course.
Questions? And so the way I'm understanding it, it, it's really in prep, uh, to prepare the teacher, the existing teaching staff, uh, in all the different areas on how to use or include, I guess, uh, the different art forms.
That certainly would be part.
And I, if I could add that, you know, as, as we've heard from Leanne, to use restricted funding first, uh, to free up and general funding, general fund second, this really comes with that. The idea is that this gives us the greatest flexibility in how we use our funding and as a utilizing this, this restricted funding source would allow us to be able to, to, um, free up some of those, these kinds of programs because we have the greatest flexibility with it.
Thank you, Ferr.
So do I have a, or any other comment?
Appreciate the premise because that was the question, right?
Move approval of item 9.2, approve the arts, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant spending plan, 2022 to 2026 for alternative.
I'll second.
Motion by Bruce, seconded by Sandra. Oscar, your vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Rest of the board, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Johnny. Thanks for, for your leadership.
9.3, approve the arts, music and instructional materials, AMIM Discretionary Block Grant Spending Plan for 2022 through 2026 for the Career Advancement Charter. And Dr. Sabah?
I think this is going to be a very similar presentation with the same approach and, uh, so I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Ms. Hassan.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I remember I told you earlier that some of the slides would look very similar. Um, this is a repeat essentially with a different amount. And so we, our allocation is much smaller, indicated there at 84,710, broken up for you on the next slide to include those indirecs. Um, and we are proposing the same thing as was just described by my colleague Johnny Rice. Our, um, freed up funds are a little narrower just because the amount is much less. And so, uh, looking it over, those were the two things that really stood out. And we were talking about field trips and getting the adults out into the community. And, um, so that's, that's what's represented there in that second bullet. And I'm here to ask you as well for your approval of these discretionary funds.
Do I have a motion?
Well, I'm happy to make a motion. Actually, just though, I was just triggered back. With, when we mentioned these field trips, you know, a couple of times tonight, um, is this like? Is this like sort of recreational, like go to a ballgame or something together? Or is it more like go to an interesting workplace and see what it's like to work there?
I think more the latter. I think they could be both. I think what our team is is thinking about is more of that exposure and perhaps visiting college campuses, workplaces, et cetera. We actually just bought our first CAC van. It just got here today, actually. And so being able to to take students to the experience, we try to do both, bring the experiences in as well. And so this will be a new a newer one for the CAC. We've done a lot in alternative ed, but it'll be a new a new endeavor with the adults.
I like it because, I mean, someone has a very limited education, very possibly they know a lot less than many people about what else is around. They haven't been exposed to it. So the more chances they have about work or fun or cultural.
Absolutely.
I'm happy to make the motion.
Is there a second?
This is to approve the arts, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant spending 22 to 2026 for the career advancement.
So Oscar, your vote on nine point three?
Aye.
The rest of the board, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next two items have been tabled. So we are moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. Great. So lots to report today and I was hoping to share with you, of course, with the end of our school year and those graduations, we've entered our extended school year for our special education students as well as our summer programs and and, you know, for we're definitely a year round organization. And so there's lots, there is lots that is occurring and and happening. I did want to share with you just to, it's not on on the slide here, but the, you know, we are looking at at making some some we've already started our project to redo our front parking lot and entrance as well as the lobby. And today you endured a little new orientation to get to this to our board meeting today. But it's as of right now, it looks like it's things are moving in a in a positive timeframe. And so we anticipate that we're hopeful, we're hopeful that that one month timeframe that we have set for this for this project will it will be done in on time. And also that we'll finally have an ADA accessible entrance as is required, as well as a lobby that is a little bit more up to date and and more welcoming for community and our staff. I wanted to share with you that we've Andres Ortiz, our student engagement and leadership coordinator and I have started the working with our Student Trustee Academy. This is our third year doing it. We have an amazing group of of young people. We encourage you to come join us Tuesdays and Thursdays from two to five and to just get to see these really inspiring students who are considering or just being student trustees for their districts or just interested in learning how the school system works. It's been a very engaging, exciting last. This is our our just our second, our second day today and really wonderful. So that's where this is taking place again at Delta High School and on the on the Cabrillo campus and we're hoping to see you join us for 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 these sessions. I wanted to let you know that our COE X Academy Robotics Team is in Tennessee as we speak, competing in the World Championships of Robotics for the MATE Robotics Championships. This is the under, this is the the underwater robotics. And so they're they're competing against 39 other teams, so 40 teams total from all over the world. And we are hopeful that, you know, they're very well prepared and we know they're they're going to represent us well. We have representation from every high school in the county on the team for the first time, students from Watsonville for the first time on the team. And so it's really exciting, this partnership with X Academy and we're we're eager to find out how well they do in in Tennessee. Also wanted to share with you that we continue to work on our efforts, our efforts to bring countywide system for behavioral health. Their the the new options to be able to bill and get reimbursed for students that have insurance will allow us to be able to create a sustainable system. We're also going to be helping to contract wellness coaches. We received notification yesterday, I believe, that we've received some of the funding for to contract wellness coaches, which are new positions that will be able to provide support for students. And and we hope that we can bring back a presentation to you about progress that we're making and helping all the schools in the county prepare for higher level of service in behavioral health. Also wanted to share that we are working with Nicole Young again to update our strategic plan. If you remember, Nicole Young came here five years ago, got your input and to talk about what equity means for the County Office of Education, to talk about what are the different roles that we play in supporting districts and providing oversight and serving students in the community. And so we would, I would request your support in being able to invite Nicole back probably in the August or September to share some of the information from that we've gathered from from our staff and working with the managers and some and other staff members and other partners. And for you to help us as we continue updating our strategic plan. So this last one is the five year plan and this is the last year of that five, those five years. And so we're updating the plan to to be able to make sure that that we have a vision for the future and the great work that we have. One one theme I can, I'll give you a sneak peek is that belonging is something that is really important to us as a value. And so that's something that you're going to see that is going to be a new feature of longing for for students, belonging for family. Something that we feel is a value that we present. I did want to share with you that the countywide we're working, the state has has released a new framework for mathematics. And that fact and the fact that our scores in mathematics across the county have dropped significantly since the pandemic are inspiring us to partner with all our school districts to implement a countywide initiative for mathematics. So the County Office of Education is has obtained support from all the districts in the county to bring math teachers and elementary teachers together to really look at how we we teach mathematics, ensure that we are providing support and the rigor that is necessary for and to get us back on track on the trajectory that we were on before the pandemic. Because we were moving in a positive direction as a county and as a state. And really, it the our our performance in in this area has dropped significantly. And and so we see this as an opportunity for us to be able to reengage our our teaching community and and our students and our families to be able to and we feel like working together and and leading and for the COE to lead this this. So we'll be, we're putting together a plan that this first year is really going to be, we're going to be doing a lot of listening and and bringing people together and establishing networks of we'll be, we'd, the Ed Services team would love to come back with Marshall Russell, who's leading the now the our our Educational Services Division to talk to you about what that's going to look like. And we are looking to expand services in Watsonville. This is something that we feel is there's a lot of opportunities for us, especially with our adult education program as it grows. That could that we're looking at additional resources, the possibility of looking for additional property. We also have some very rundown alternative education sites that really require better facilities for our students. And so we are really looking around to see if there are better facilities that we can acquire. And so this is something that we may come back to you in a in a on a future date and say we are, you know, we've identified some a site or or two that that we might allow us to be able to expand services and also offer students, as you know, when you walk into Sequoia High School, what you feel when you're in that school is a beautiful sight. And what the students feel, the pride they feel as they walk into that feeling that this is a sight worthy of them. That's what we want our all our students to experience. So we are maxed out at Sequoia High School. The CAC and Sequoia are really at in a place where where it's it's we need additional space. And so this is something that we're we're looking at. I did want to share with you also that some upcoming events. So the Student Trustee Academy has started this week and is going to go through July 11th. And Delta High School, the students will be coming to speak with you on July 18th and present here as they have done in the past to for you to see. One is how amazing they are, but also for you to hear about what they've learned this year. We have beefed up our curriculum a little bit more. We've we dove today into the law understanding the difference between statutory law and case law. The students have been really impressive in understanding, looking at our data portal and identifying areas of equity. Last on Tuesday, they were looking at our data portal and they were saying things like, you know, I've noticed that our that when it comes to chronic absenteeism, our students who are identified as homeless have increased their chronic absenteeism. So they're saying things like this and thinking about that and advocating, wondering why these this is happening and wanting to know what they can do. Students as student trustees, as community members to to address some of these inequities, to really advocate for. There's a Capital Advisors Budget Perspectives Workshop also on the 11th. A we're doing the Stuff the Bus on August 3rd and we would love to see you at any of these events and especially at our COE All Staff Kickoff on August 7th. And then we will be having our administrative kickoff September 23rd with special presentation by Ron Clark, who's a motivational inspirational administrative leader and I did want to, I want to give a special shout out to Nick and and Vernice, but Nick, who was there all day at the at the Pride event. And it was really a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to participate in Pride. We had a lot of great people who who participated in the parade and then also many who who were there to just greet greet folks and let people know that we stand for supporting all our students and our students in our community. I hear the biggest and most best attended Pride rate ever. And I'm just really grateful to to Nick and everybody who's supported it. And finally, I have to announce that Oscar Alvarez Delgado, this is his last meeting. And Oscar has been our inaugural student trustee, the first student trustee. That's nobody else can ever say that ever again. Oscar, I just have to say, you know, Oscar, your compassion and your sensitivity. When I'm thinking about a year ago, when you interviewed to be a part of this, to be on the board and you talked to us about 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 mental health and how you wanted to advocate for 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 students who are experiencing challenges with their with their mental health. How you reached out to student trustees across the county. How you've shown up and participated and with such professionalism and you are an inspiration to 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 me. And I think to you are a role model as a student and and it's just a leader in our community. And I am sad that this is your last meeting. I hope that you're gonna, I I hope that you'll you'll find a way to be able to continue to support students here in in as as part of your role. I know that your future is so bright and I'm so excited for your future as you continue on your journey because it's been an honor to watch you, to learn from you and to to watch you grow. Congratulations. I'd like to ask board members if you have any if you have any comments and then we'll ask Oscar if he'd like to share. Actually, his report is right after this.
So Eddie comments about first?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody like to speak up first?
Oscar, I've appreciated you from that very first. Not a typical thing that somebody who is a student would want to like look at the higher level of what it's about. Done that. I don't know if that's the way you thought about it, but to me it's good to take one role you're in and then expand it. Appreciated your comments and input on also when you reported on the work you've done.
I'd like to say that he comes to to the table dressed well. And every time I glance over there, I think the judge is sitting there. I I enjoy your presence and your comments and glad to have you on the team. Did I do my trustee report now?
No, we're going to finish with comments.
Okay.
Oscar.
We both came on at the same time. I'm so glad that you went first. Really broke the ice with it and, you know, what you spoke about really, you know, was important. I could tell, you know, for you and for a lot of other students, you know, and, you know, being a good representative for, you know, folks that look like you, that feel how you feel and have the same life experiences as you, you know, that was really great. And you've done an amazing job. From what I've seen in your reports, like Bruce mentioned, you know, all of the, you know, bringing other students across the county together. It's just been really great. So, I mean, you'll always be part of the team. So I'm really excited to see what you do going forward. So of course, I'm sure we're all going to stay in touch with all of us because we want to know, you know, what you're up to in the upcoming years. So.
I just want to say thank you for putting up with us. I am impressed by the fact that there is hundreds, you know, your time is very valuable, right? And there's so much that you could have chosen to do, but you chose to do this. Not only did you choose to it, but you committed to it. And I think those are the skills. I think that's what's really going to get you far. Something that's very admirable, something that I, we, you know, I think we all appreciate. And it's so important to just to have that student voice. What we do, everything that we do here is for the students and to have that representation on the board, you know, every single time we meet, I think it's very valuable. So thank you. Thank you for taking your time for choosing to do this. I think you've definitely left a lasting, big impression on us and huge, huge shoes to fill for the next student trustee.
And Oscar, what I really liked was that you took the spirit of our County Office of Education and expanded it at the student level immediately. Very, very important. And I hope that this has been a positive growth situation for you and that you see the importance of public commitment to leadership. And that we we help to kind of see what it what it's like and that you'll put that into your toolkit and and go with it as as you are able. No, no, no pressure. But you are a very fine voice and you are developing very nicely. So thank you very much for accepting this position with us. Hopefully you are inspiration. Hopefully, you are an inspiration to the students that surround you and the students that will be coming forth to this position. Thank you.
I only feel disappointed that I didn't get a chance to work with you, because I'm just coming on board, but it sounds like you've made quite the impact this board, and it sounds like the commitment to here you will take with you.
Hate to see you go. Okay, now, could we hear your final report, final student trustee report?
Honestly, to put in simple words, I just want to say thank you to everyone, to the board, to Ferris, to Vernice, to Leanne, to Nick, to Andres, who has helped me throughout this whole process of being student trustee. I appreciate it so much, and I've gained so much from this experience. It's, to put in simple terms for me, it's surreal that it's ending for me already. I remember coming here, being scared to get interviewed. I sat down in that desk, I looked ahead of me, and I was, I was shocked. I was, this doesn't feel like I should be here, but, you know, I went through the interview process, I kept my head up, and when it was time, when I think Bruce said my name, I felt like, it was, I just, I couldn't believe it. I sat there, I put my head down, the other interviewees like, patted me on the back, but like, I just, I was in awe, to be honest.
Look on your face.
We all remember it.
Oh, my God.
It's like shocking, shocking awe.
I, and then to be here on my last board meeting, it's, I don't know, it doesn't, doesn't feel like it's ending, but it is. I just want to say that I've gained so much from this. I did so much. I was able to do speeches, participate in podcasts, do student panels, all because of this position that I was able to, that I was given to, and I'm so grateful. I've grown, I've been able to speak better in public, I've become more social, I've had better leadership skills, I've grown, like my, my, like how I see the government has changed, and how it connects to education has changed. For me, I just, I hope the student trustee that comes ahead of me succeeds what I have done. And I hope that, I don't, I just, it doesn't feel real, but I don't know how to say it. I want to thank everyone here, and I'm so appreciative for the board, again, for Ferris, for Andres, for everyone that has helped me along this way. I couldn't be more appreciative. Thank you everyone so much.
Come back and visit. Let us know what you're doing.
Now, for the. Okay, I'm glad to report a duty that I usually pick up one of these when it's graduation time. And this time, I went to a graduation ceremony at the Portuguese Hall over here at the corner where the streets come together, overpass Costco. And I attended the Oasis North County graduation ceremony. And these ceremonies are short and sweet, but what the, some of the kids have, you know, features that they want to give too. And anyway, I think, I think it's one of the, one of the most pleasurable duties that we have. Ready to do it again. My, 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 my calendar is so full of medical trips. It's just terrible. It's like, I look down here and I go, oh, Dr. So-and-so, and the dentist, and the, nothing, nothing. Nothing's just for, go get some exercise or, I just, my, my calendar is filled up with the, with the medical stuff. Follow-up of last month when I came, and you guys were surprised to see me because I'd been in the emergency room. Yeah, yeah, this is just, it's full of, full of medical stuff. Places I have to go for medical. Okay, that's my report. Didn't have time to turn, do anything besides what I had signed up for. And, uh, sending the same graduations. That's my report.
Thank you, Sandra.
Yep. I'm going to close that and not look at it tonight.
Let me think about this fast. It's gone by so quickly. And we had the special board meeting last month. So, right, I think that same day, it was the post-senior special ed graduation that I went to, which was amazing. And, I mean, brought tears to my eyes. It was so amazing and wonderful, and, yeah, I was so grateful to be there, to see it. The room was filled, it was packed, all the chairs were taken, people were standing, and it was for, how many graduating folks? Six. And the whole tech center was, was filled with happiness, friends, family, community partners, all there for, you know, showing out in support of our students. And it was absolutely wonderful. And I wish I could have reported out that day, because I was just so happy. I wanted to, I wanted to say it at the end of the meeting that we had that day. And then, at the beginning of this month, I also went to Pride with some other folks here, who will probably report that out as well. And it was wonderful. Got my monthly dose of sun out there. So, it was wonderful weather, and it was great, great turnout, so I really loved it. And I got, I got a COE shirt from it, so I will have to rep that wherever I go now. So, I guess that's mainly my report.
Graduations and Pride and budget, usual stuff I enjoy doing. My personal thing is that Tuesday is when all my teeth come out. That's my big operation.
Beginning of a new.
I am scared of the prospect of having all my teeth come out, but they're not doing me any good now. None of them oppose each other, you know, so I can't choose. And the amazing thing for me is that I couldn't afford this and a bunch of my friends.
Go for it, yeah. Be happy. It'll take some recovery time, but it'll be.
Oh, and I may, the operation is Tuesday. Get fit, next day with temper again. After that is our next board meeting. A, you have to zoom. I'm just not sure what, tell me, don't expect to get home from the operation hour, so it's a pretty heavy duty.
And I know I can help with that.
Oh, okay.
Rachel, how was your first month?
Oh, my. Well, the highlight was the special board meeting, which brought me here till today. But I enjoy being out in the community, so I have a list of things that I was able to participate in. I went to the Harbor High Arts Showcase that they had at the Ria, which was an amazing program, because it just didn't include Harvard students, but students that they invited from Anna Cruz High. And so, was this whole, first time their, it was their film society, they just had come back from Paris, from a big competition, and they invited the dance teams and the choir, and it was this whole event. So, that was a lot of fun. Also attended the Pride event with the COE. I did not get a shirt, so saying, some people are special around here. But it was wonderful. I had so much fun. I jumped back to the back of the line with another club and walked with them, so it was a lot of fun. I attended the Rather, Rather Annual Awards, which included honoring a few organizations that work directly and indirectly with students in our community, Positive Discipline, the Pahara Valley Prevention and Student Assistance Nonprofit, and the Food and Nutrition Services Department of the PBUSD was also honored, so that was kind of cool. The Juneteenth celebration that they had at the London Nelson Center just this past weekend was a lot of fun, and to see a couple of folks from, and lots of onboarding, lots of onboarding meetings, so I got to meet a lot of great people and got taken a lot of information, still processing all of that.
Thank you for diving in on this.
Yes, it was a lot of fun.
Graduations, I also attended a couple of them, specifically in the Watsonville area, tried to support our programs down there. Went to Oasis South County, went to El Nido de Wit, La Manzana, Escuela Que tal, Freedom, Independent Study, Sequoia. You don't kind of forget all the programs that we have until you start attending those graduations, but I definitely, of course, always enjoyed them. Enjoyed the feel for them, enjoy the students speaking, those that are interested in sharing are willing to open, it's always very powerful, and then just seeing the family and the support that they receive. And in addition to that, I also attended the PBUSD's adult ed graduation that they had at the Mellow Center. And that's my report.
I attended four different graduations that covered several schools, Islands Community, Independent Studies, The Cottage, Star Community, Star P, ELC, Seabright, Oasis, Oasis and Seabright. And the one thing I really like is you become very aware of the relationship of the students, the teachers know the students, the students know the teachers, and they, and they both speak about each other. And I remember the first time I went to one of these graduations at the county level, I felt kind of a grief for our regular districts, whose graduations are kind of, and then I went, okay, can't worry about that, I'm just grateful for what we are doing in this county for some very important reasons. So, the, and the budget committee, thank you. One day I will understand. Capital advisors. End of meeting, and of course, a special board meeting. So, that's what I did. I missed some important ones, but I've been traveling. Daughter has taken on a foster child, who it will lead to, not adoption, but different in Oregon, they terminated. So, anyway, that's been a very interesting. So, I don't think there's any ad hoc or standing committee.
Before we move on, I did want to share, President Raff, that I did receive, I hadn't noticed, but I did get a text from Ed Acosta at 3:46, sharing that he wasn't feeling
So, our next scheduled meeting is next week, 4 o'clock, 2:27 here. And then, next regular meeting will be here.
And I also did want to share that I will be, I will be zooming in for the next meeting. So, it'll be my first meeting on Zoom since the pandemic.
Okay, and you'll have an umbrella drink in your hand?
Not on camera, no.
Not on camera, okay. The meeting is adjourned.